Go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is eight thirty-two Wednesday, December eighteenth. This is the State Board of Education. And if we can start off with a roll call?
Yes. Mohammed Jo. Gray Farren.
I'm here.
Kim Gleason.
I'm here. Good morning.
Caleb Greenwood.
I'm here.
Tammy Colby.
Good morning.
Lyle Jepson.
Here.
Tom Lovett. Jenna O'Farrell.
Here.
Jennifer Dex Samuelson.
Here. Good morning.
Rich Werner.
Here. Thank you.
Secretary Saunders.
Hi. Good morning. I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Before we get started, are there any amendments to the agenda? Tammy?
Good morning. I would like to amend the agenda to drop item K and reallocate that time to agenda item H. Item K is the Listen and Learn with the State Board. Item H is the update for the Commission of Future Public Education. To move that we amend the agenda?
Okay, so there's a motion. Is there a second and then we can discuss?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Just a question about what we might have learned during that time about the Listen and Learn.
Um, Lyle, my, the rationale for making the motion is this. One, Agenda K is forty-five minutes on our agenda this morning, and we don't have any materials. We don't have any discussion items. We don't have, we don't even know what that is. And that agenda item was added after the prep meeting that we had with the agency. So I'm really unclear what we're doing with that time. The second, the second rationale that I'm offering is the Commission has done some work recently, and there was a vote on Monday on a report that our chair voted on as well, an affirmative that we haven't had an update on that report. We had no way to weigh in on that report prior to that vote. And it seems as if this work is progressing, and if our chair is voting on work, we should be able to have a much longer discussion of that report and what's in that report, and have an update on sort of what's going on with that. And so it seems like it makes sense for us to take that valuable time we have today and shift it from an agenda item where we, I don't think any of us could be prepared to have a discussion, to one where I think we very much need a discussion.
So I want to have Zoe weigh in on this, but Tammy, not true that you didn't have a chance to weigh in on the report. I sent the draft report out to the full board last week and solicited.
You sent it on Friday, and then on Monday there was updated report.
And that updated report, yes, was not included with the agenda packet that went out with the Commission.
Yeah, but you didn't send us the update. I only know there's an updated report because somebody else told me there was an updated report. You did not send the updated report to the board.
That is true, because it wasn't submitted. It was not submitted. It was not posted before the Commission meeting. So there was no.
I understand that, but that happened on Monday, and today is Wednesday.
Okay. But.
So anyway, so the, the Commission report, there were a lot of amendments that happened in time at that meeting, and so happy to share updates of that process. With respect to the Listen and Learn tour, if you would like to have that conversation at a later time, that's fine. The board had indicated an interest in making sure that there was an opportunity to provide feedback. We are wrapping up the Agency of Education's Listen and Learn tour, and we will be publishing some of the high-level themes early January. So wanted to give you an opportunity to really preview some of the themes that we've heard and solicit your feedback on some of the key areas of inquiry that we've asked the public. All of that is really consistent with what I've shared over the past several months in terms of the information that we've been sharing. That has been inclusive of the reports that we've shared with the board and the broader public, and also the questions that we've asked. But certainly, if the board would like to host that conversation next month or the month after, I'm open to that. So I'll, I'll defer to the board on what would be interesting.
Well, and it'd be great to have the materials in advance, and I know you're the same way. It's, it's so much easier to have a fulsome discussion around things when we have things in advance to read and think through. And if you're pulling together key themes, that would be great. It would be terrific to see the good work in advance so we can really understand and have a conversation about it. Thank you.
So, and let me just clarify, because, and I, I see Kim and Jenna, you have your hands raised. My understanding, Zoe, is that you are going to be finalizing the report based on the results of your Listen and Learn tour before the board's January meeting. So if you want input from the board before you finalize the report, today would be the day to do it. If the board is comfortable with you finalizing the report and then having kind of a post-mortem discussion with the board, then that could wait until January or February or some other time. Am I, am I correct that that is the issue?
I wouldn't call it an issue, but that is correct on the timing. And I know board members, some have participated in the Listen and Learn tour. That was available to, to everyone. And certainly, there's comments that you've shared throughout the last several months that are consistent with a lot of the themes that we're hearing. So the opportunity is, do you want to have a focused conversation to lay in on, you have the board is defining student success, the conditions for student success, and thinking about prioritization around budget? So these are all things that I've framed with the board over this past several months that we've been engaging in conversation. And if you wanted to have a discussion to provide some additional comments, that would be great, and we could include it in the report. But it's not, it's up to the board in terms of how you want to proceed.
Okay. Kim and then Jenna.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I think it is concerning to have such a large block of time without any materials and to envision that being a full conversation. I think equally important to me is the concern regarding the real lack of information regarding Commission work and the representation without an engagement with our board. So I, I don't want to dismiss the value of Listen and Learn. I, I, I think it can probably be handled in the secretary's report, and we could realot that time to a fulsome understanding of what's going on, to have those updates be done by virtue of attachments to public minutes. It has not been adequate to keep our board engaged on how we are being represented on the Commission. That body of work was to have been pretty pivotal in what will be coming up and what will be problem-solved around public education. And we literally have not had any sort of overview understanding or areas where you would be looking for our input on that, and that is problematic. The, if, if a report that came to us, and honestly, Jennifer, I was looking for the email. I don't recall being asked. We were asked for feedback on the report to the legislature from the SBE, and I provided pretty thorough feedback on that. I don't recall. I think we got an FYI with the draft report of the Commission. And I apologize if I sort of didn't read that to say, provide feedback. But regardless, it sounds like it's not optimal practice. Oh, it might be that I, I was not available to even make the deadline. So that's totally fine. Either way, I don't feel like I could have probably given you good feedback, not having been kept up with what's going on with the Commission, frankly. And so consequently, that is a big issue, and I, I will own not having given you direct feedback on a report. But then that the Commission had a dramatically altered report and took action on it, and you voted on it on Monday without, on a changed report without feedback from the board. It just, the Commission's representation has been not informed by this body. And so that is problematic as a matter of process. So for me, I'd rather see the time reallocated. If, if we want to abbreviate a conversation regarding a board feedback on something that we really haven't had an opportunity to sort of know our question, what are the questions you want us to be thinking about ahead? Maybe that could extend the secretary's report and give Zoe a little feedback on that, and then we could hear what has been the outcome of the Listen and Learn, you know, when that, those themes have been formulated. And, but I would really wish that we would have a more dedicated time to discuss the process, the work, the input that would be important from the board for the Commission. So that's my thought on reallocating and seconding.
Okay. Thank you. Jenna?
Thank you, Kim, and Zoe, and Tammy for raising this. I guess I just had a generalized feedback on the agenda planning that this really takes me back to August, to the conversations that we had, and allowing enough time to get into the materials that we need to and have robust discussions. And I think that you have a captive board that really wants to have these discussions, and we're not afforded the opportunity. And also, I was going back to the minutes from November, and we, you know, did we ever put closure on the AOE coming back to us with the updated sheet? And that, that was in the minute, so that was gonna happen.
An updated what? I'm sorry.
In the minutes, it says that the AOE will come back with suggestions in the application as discussed to see. Like, I just, the agenda items that get raised, we just, they fall off, and then they don't come back. And I think this was part of our discussion that we had in August, because like, when do we come back to things if they're not the next month? And then allowing enough time to have discussions for things that are on the agenda. And I, I don't know. The answer might be, like, I don't know if the answer is, but do we have to have, should we go back to a longer meeting? Because I think it's not, here we are trying to make decisions of like, what's, what's more pressing, what's more timely? Do we extend the time to have?
And with regard to that, Jenna, and I realize your email is not working at the moment, but Zoe did send out an email last night with the updated form. So you wouldn't know that.
No. It's not working. Okay.
Zoe?
I was just gonna share, it's really important for me, from the AOE perspective, to ensure that we're closing the loop on any of the questions that the board has. So we did send a memo last night to give an update from that conversation, and I plan to address it also in my secretary's report, to make sure that, you know, we're being very responsive and following up on those conversations. And as it relates to the agenda item for the Listen and Learn tour, I'm fine if the board would like to do that next month. We'll also be providing an update to the Commission on our preliminary findings from the Listen and Learn tour in January. And so that would be fine with me, and I think would be a great discussion. So either way, I'm open to the direction the board would like to take.
Zoe, I, I liked Kim's suggestion that maybe we can make it an end in both, and we lengthen your agency secretary presentation, but also then reallocate some time to the Commission. Is, how do you feel about that? I mean, I do think your work is really valuable. I, I just want to make sure we're able to engage and provide you the kind of input and thoughtful reaction. It's really hard to, I know you're a professional. I mean, it's hard to do when you don't, don't know in advance. So maybe we could, would that be okay if we allocated a little bit more time? Okay.
Absolutely. And, and I was intending for this to be more than one conversation. Right? Because this is really critical to thinking about the agency's strategic plan and also really is aligned to some of the work around the Commission. So what I'll do in my secretary's report is I'll just provide a high-level overview of what we've learned so far in the Listen and Learn and preview to you the type of questions I'd like to engage the board around for the next month.
That's really helpful. Thank you, Zoe.
I'd like to call the question.
Lyle, and then Tom?
I'd like to call the question.
Okay. So I believe we vote on calling the question. So all those in favor of calling the question, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any extensions? Okay, hearing none. You've heard the motion is proposed by Tammy. All those in favor of tabling Agenda Item K to next month, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. All right.
Actually, the, the motion had two parts, Jennifer. It was tabling K, but also moving the time to having more time for us to discuss the Commission. So it's actually both.
Okay. So since we didn't include that in first motion, all those.
Oh, it was in the first motion, I thought. No?
Well, I just.
It was in the first motion.
It wasn't, that's what I seconded. It was in the first motion. But maybe, I don't know if it can be read back. Sorry.
I incorrectly restated Tammy's motion. That's my point.
Got it. But the, and Rich will, Rich will check us. But in that the motion was made and seconded and it included both parts, the vote was based on that. I know Jennifer was summarizing, so we don't need to do anything differently. It's gonna do both parts, right, Richard?
I, I would say so unless somebody would like to change their vote, because they didn't understand that. But I think everybody knows it.
Thank you. I love having a resident parliamentarian.
Sometimes.
Thank you.
Thanks. Tom, you still have your hand raised? Does you have a question?
Oh. Uh, no. I was, I, my question was, how much time are we reallocating? And are we spending any time on item K? But that seems to be taking care of it in the motion.
Yeah. So I think we're gonna have maybe, I mean, and, and I will point out that it says at the beginning of our agenda that the times in order provided are estimates and are subject to change. So I don't think we need to vote to extend time on any particular agenda item. I think it's covered. I think the salient thing is that we have tabled Agenda Item K to a future meeting. Okay, so with that, let's move on, and I will ask if there are any members of the public who wish to be heard. If you're on the Teams platform, you can raise your hand. And if you're calling in, I'm not sure. I see anyone calling in. It is star five to raise your hand. So I'm not seeing any hands raised. I will leave this open while we move on to our next agenda item, which is to approve the State Board of Education minutes from our November twentieth, twenty twenty-four meeting. Is there a motion?
I will move that we approve the minutes of the November twentieth, twenty twenty-four minutes.
Move by Rich. Lyle, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving our State Board of Education minutes from November twentieth, twenty twenty-four, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Okay, the motion carries. Thank you. Board announcements. So I've got a couple. One is, I did receive some feedback after our meeting last month about the tone of our meeting, but also the fact that board members were not able to have a full conversation. There was a lot of interrupting, and there was a lot of, you know, people feeling like they, they couldn't participate. So I will own responsibility for that as the chair. I think I need to do a better job of moderating our meetings. I'm a firm believer in having robust conversations, but I think when people aren't able to actually participate, then I, I need to do a better job. So I would just remind board members to let other people speak, to take turns, to not interrupt, and to let people answer questions. And then I will do my best to go in order and make sure that if someone who hasn't spoken raises a hand, that they are able to speak before we revert back to other people who have already spoken. So that's my first announcement. My second announcement is ethics training. Kim brought this up a few months ago, and I think Tammy and Gray are the only two people who still need to do their ethics training. So when you do, just, you'll get a certificate that needs to be sent to Maureen and Suzanne with a copy to me. And then I will close that topic out. And then two things that have been included in the agenda packet. One is we had voted on in our October meeting, the board's response to the Vermont School Boards Association with their task force. So that's just been included. You know, that was sent out. That's the final copy. And then in response to that response from the board, the V S B A reconvened its task force to process the response from the board, and then they submitted the reply. So that is also included in the agenda packet. And then the final thing that's been included in the agenda packet, just as an FYI, is an independent schools flow chart that I actually put together. And this was submitted to all accrediting organizations that are seeking recognition by the board just to visually depict how independent schools are either recognized or approved but ineligible to receive public tuition, or recognized and approved to receive public tuition, or or approved and eligible to receive public tuition, or therapeutic schools. And so it just goes through the process, and, you know, whether it's the agency or an accrediting agency that is responsible for the site visit. So again, I just wanted to include that in the agenda packet so the board members would have it. So those are my announcements. I will pause there if there are any questions or other board announcements. Okay, I'm not hearing anything. Just checking. Okay, um, let me circle back again to public comment. And again, I'm not seeing anyone. Okay. My other announcement is I do have a hard stop today at twelve-thirty, which shouldn't be a problem, but just want to acknowledge that. Okay, student report. So Gray, let me turn it over to you.
I don't have too much to report on this month. The, you know, not, not a lot is happening as we're approaching holiday vacation. Our semester doesn't actually end until January, but, you know, we're still, it's still a time of wrapping things up and having our final summative assessments and everything like that. So it's, it's not too active, I would say, outside of that. Sports seasons are starting up again. For me, that means indoor track. We had our first track meet this past weekend. And, but most, most sports teams have only had their first game. None of those seasons are too far in. And then one of the only other things I can think of is that chorus, our chorus at the school is actually really big right now. For a school of, you know, there are less than three hundred people in our high school. We have like a ninety-person chorus. So that's a lot of our school that participates in chorus. Not that I do. But my sister does. And for Jen's, combined with Mount Abe and Middlebury to do an opera this fall, which isn't something that I thought high schoolers did, but it was really cool. And I, I went to see it because my sister was in it. They did Dido and Aeneas, which is an opera based on a chapter of the Aeneid. And it was really cool. And I think it was a nice experience, because that's not the type of thing that a lot of high schoolers did to participate in, not the type of music that lots of choruses get to do. But obviously, with all three of those choruses combined, you had the opportunity for a very large body of people and a lot of audience, too, because you're combining the families of all of those programs across the schools. And it was just a really cool one-time event. So I'm glad that was able to happen. But I think that's it for me.
So you'd mentioned last month, Gray, that auditions for nine to five were starting. Are you in that, or was that just a general?
Yes, I am in that. I play, if any of you remember the movie, I'm the boss there, the kind of evil one. That's my role. Nine to Five has slowed down, though. All our musical timing is a little bit weird, but we don't actually start anything until January. And that's, our, our musical is always kind of funky like that with the timeline, because at this point, it's been a month since auditions, maybe more, but we still, still haven't done anything and still won't until, like, mid-January. So nothing more has happened with that since last time.
All right. And you are done on Friday for break, correct?
Yes.
When do you go back to school?
Only a couple more days. Um, that is a good question. I couldn't tell you the date right off the top of my head. We don't have a super-long break. I think it's, it's whatever, a week and then three days out of the next week, maybe. Yeah.
All right. Well, I hope you have a great break.
Thank you.
Caleb?
All right. Morning, everybody. A lot of what Gray said is very similar to our school. We're going on break this Friday, and then we're on break until the second of January, I believe. So like Gray said, about a week and a half-ish. Uh, our school also participated at that indoor track meet this past weekend, performed very well. Unfortunately, I'm not participating this year. I'm saving my legs for outdoor track. But our first basketball game, other than scrimmages, is this Friday. And it's a home game, so everyone's getting excited for that, getting ready for that, because there's been a couple scrimmages, but this is the first, like, season game, and it's against Linden. So we're all looking forward to that. The play I mentioned earlier, last, uh, last month, is Once Upon a Mattress, the musical. So that's, we actually have a pretty high amount of people that are participating in that with a mix of like understudies and lights, like all the behind-the-scenes stuff. There's a lot of people doing that, like a lot of effort going into that performance. So everyone's looking forward to that. We're still in the search for a superintendent and principal. We do have a couple applicants for our principal position, so that's something to look forward to, because recently we haven't had a lot of applicants. So that's kind of been a struggle. Our su, excuse me, our superintendent application process is still kind of a struggle. We don't have a lot of applicants. So we're still looking for that. But I also do believe our vice principal might also be getting done. So a lot of, yeah, a lot of leadership changes at Lake Region. But yeah, I think that's.
Sorry.
No, you're good. You're good.
You're on the superintendent search committee, correct?
Yeah, I am.
Okay. What is your timeline? Like, when do you hope to have a superintendent?
Um, honestly, I'm not sure. Because of the lack of applicants originally, our first meeting was supposed to be, I believe, like, the start to mid, like, November. And now it's been pushed back over and over just from a lack of applicants. I know that for principal, they're looking at, like, end of February for a decision. So I'm not sure. Probably somewhere near that, hopefully, for superintendent.
All right. Thank you. Board members, any questions for Gray or Caleb? Not hearing any.
I'm curious, Caleb, what events do you run in outdoor track? Are you and Gray gonna compete against each other in a meet this spring? Because if so, I think we all want to come. We all want to come.
I'm not, I'm not as strong as Gray. I can't do long distance. I do sprints and long jump. Gray is, Gray is much more strong than I am.
Yeah. It's great to hear you both track, into track. It would be fun to see you both run at the same time.
Well, Caleb, I hope you two have a great break. Take some well-deserved time off. Tom?
Yeah, not so much a question, but just a comment, following up on what Caleb said about all the leadership changes. Just this week, I was made aware of two principals in our area, which is also Caleb's area. One is leaving mid-year, and one has announced leaving at the end of the year. It seems to be, it, it seems to be a trend up here, and, yeah, just concerning that the amount of leadership turnover in the Northeast Kingdom right now. So just, just a comment. And Caleb, thank you for bringing that up.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. I'm gonna circle back one last time for public comment. Still not seeing anybody, but I'll just double-check. Okay, so this takes us to our next agenda item, which are the Health and Physical Education standards. So this agenda item arises pursuant to the board's authority in sixteen V S A one sixty-four-nine and State Board of Education Rule twenty-one-eleven to implement and periodically update student performance standards. As you all recall, the agency first brought these standards before the board at our August meeting and provided a presentation. The board then referred out consideration of these standards to our Student Performance Standards Committee, which has met a few times to go over the standards. So Kim and Tammy, I will turn it over to you.
Hey, thank you. And so our board's work, or our committee's work together was to engage was to engage with the AOE, but also with our constituent groups. We reached out to the, we'll call them the Vs, the superintendents, the school boards, the NEA, the curriculum coordinators and the principals to ask them to react and respond to the green sheet from the AOE for both PE and health and the actual standards. In each of those, the feedback we received were primarily focused on implementation and the concerns for agency capacity to support implementation. We invited at the meeting we just had on Monday. So it was our second meeting for consideration. The first meeting, the AOE came and sort of presented the distinctions and differences in the updated version. Talked a little bit about the national process for development of those standards or those updates to those standards. And so that we could sort of frame out what we were considering and understand it. And at this second meeting on Monday, they addressed in response to the feedback from the field, some of their plans regarding implementation. And discussed the resources available at the national level because we are asking the full board to consider and adopt the nationally updated standards that comes with support at the national level. The AOE said that, or Ian from the AOE who may be with us, he indicated that they have a draft plan, if you will, that I think they may have even shown us a glimpse of in August where we were not sure what our process was going to be for approval as a body. And so they will refine that once these standards have been adopted. Their hope is that they will have been able to provide professional development support for the proficiency indicators for these new standards for the field over the summer and into September. So they will be, the field will feel there to be support to implement these new standards with integrity. And I don't know Mohammed or Tammy, if you feel I've missed anything, please jump in. And I see Ian is with us. Ian, if you see that we've missed anything, I saw last night, I actually, I actually saw it this morning, that we received the written, I think Ian was working from a draft when he was responding in our meeting to the feedback we received from the field. And I see that that came into the meeting packet last night. So within the meeting packet, I think we have the written AOE response to the themes of the responses that we got from the field. But I'm sure probably the board wouldn't have had an opportunity before to have reviewed. All of our committee's approval was at our meeting on Monday. So understand that we were able to get to the green sheets before, but feedback from our meeting on Monday was, was only available probably yesterday. Our meeting was in the evening, so.
So what I would, what I might add to that is for Sean and Ian and the agency for being a good partner in this work. I, you know, this is the first time we've taken on standards as a board in a long time. And this has been a really great process, I think, for getting sort of feedback and sort of having conversations with the agency. Ian did provide to all of us last night, you know, sort of a written response. But that information he had summarized and was, I would consider that a very much more summary from our discussion on Monday. So there isn't, I don't think anything new in there. But I, I will say that I, I really have appreciated this process with having the subcommittee review the standards and being able to have these really fulsome conversations of the agency around this, but also the opportunity to solicit feedback from the field. And to Kim's point, the feedback we received from the field was certainly in support of the standards and, and sticking with the national standards and recognizing that the updates were important. But I think it's always nice to also hear from the field about sort of their concerns with implementation. And so we, we shared with Ian and I think that he can share with you or we can share with you as well. Sort of the emails we received about some very specific kinds of things and areas for support the field might find most useful. And that might be helpful to you and your team as you think about implementing the standards. But implementation is not part of our purview and making a decision for approving or not approving. But it was, we did, since we've received that information, we certainly want to feed it back to you.
Yeah, appreciate that. And I'm aware that that was part of the conversation and thinking about implementation. That's an area we're very focused on at the agency. We've been getting that feedback through our listen and learn tour. So we're in very concrete and tangible ways. We are ramping up our support of the field and doing additional training and really being intentional around supporting implementation. I know Ian is very committed to that. We're also thinking creatively about how to utilize different grant resources to support that and enabling our, further enabling our capacity to do that as an agency. So appreciate that conversation and just want the board to know that we take that very seriously. And we've been talking a lot about how the agency can support with implementation. That's a very key focus for us.
And that was really clear from Ian's presentation. And again, a shout out to Ian for being extremely thoughtful and careful in his thinking around sort of adopting the standards, what they mean for the, what they mean for the state. And I can see and hear how he's engaged with the field in really meaningful ways, not just in Vermont, but nationally to really bring sort of this kind of information and put forward some really high quality standards in these areas. So it's really a credit to his good thinking and hard work on this. Much appreciated, Ian.
Thank you. I appreciate you acknowledging Ian's work. He's one of our talented team members and really brings a lot of passion to this work. So Ian, it's always great to be able to brag on you a little bit in our team. And thank you for what you've done and and on all you continue to do. But that level of engagement with the field is really important. And as you referenced, that coordination with other, other national experts as well. So we have great team members and appreciate your work, Ian.
And again, as part of the process, it's just really nice to be able to engage with staff at AOE around these issues. There's such a great deep bench of staff at the agency. So having these subcommittees and these kinds of opportunities is really great.
And I think the only two other things thematically that I wanted to reference, which again, fall out of our ability to, or our purview and responsibility. There was a, a response indicating that these should be the same standards that are expectations for both public and private schools receiving public dollars. That came up. And again, that I think is not, that is a statutory consideration for what language references and requires of independent schools. And, and then the other piece, I think, was related to where proficiency, PE, health standard indicators and determinants live within a very somewhat prescribed number of seat time that is spoken to in EQS. And that was an area that Tammy and I recognized may have been beneficial to have updated in the last round of EQS. So I will only put sort of a flag in it for you all looking forward. We didn't have the opportunity to have taken, by the time we recognized statute wasn't as prescribed as what was in EQS. We had not had the opportunity to take testimony on altering the prescription with an EQS for the amount of seat timer credits, if you will, for PE. And I think that as Ian and the folks at the AOE and others are looking at the proficiency standards for PE and health, there may be a rub with a more prescribed number of credits, if you will. So we recognized the problem at the end of EQS and did not have time to complete what we were doing with respect to act one and get the thorough feedback we felt it would have deserved to have made what would have been a sort of prescribed dramatic, relatively dramatic change in a subject matter area within EQS. So we flag it as something to consider as the indicators are developed. What recommendations for change might be appropriate for EQS? And while we didn't anticipate a phase one, phase two on EQS, I do think that as it goes into implementation, not dissimilar to some of the work we needed to do with 2200, it, it may be that there's an occasion where there is a brief updating to align with standards in a rearview mirror kind of manner with EQS. I don't think people should worry that EQS is going to start moving the bar wholesale. But, and it will not be work that I will have the privilege to do. But I flag it for you all. So I, I think that, and I don't know that maybe from the top of the green sheet, we read a motion to have the board discussion on these. Is that, how would you like us to do it, Jennifer? I'm not, I'm trying to remember the green sheets and get them up on my abs. They're here somewhere. They're buried.
Well, I'm also seeing Lyle's hand too.
Yeah. Yeah. So I would turn to Lyle. And if there are any other comments or questions.
The question on any changes we make to any standards, I guess, what provision is in place or would be in place for opportunities for professional development for teachers as we make changes anywhere in the system? It seems like we are asking for professional development.
I think I'll turn it to Zoe. Thanks, Zoe. I was like, that is the implementation part that was of concern for sure. Go ahead.
Those are part of the conversations that we've been having as an agency is how we can best support with implementation. And part of that is providing clarity to the field and additional resources and training. So I'll let Ian expand on the implementation plan and how we are are organizing our work to support educators in that field.
Thank you for the question. And some of that I think is captured in my responses because that's what was one of the, the Vs higher level feedback was around implementation. So there's, until the standards were adopted, it's hard to say exactly what we're going to put in place. So some of these ideas have not been finalized because of the fact that the standards were not yet adopted. But I have been working closely with SHAPE National on developing and implementing trainings for August. Some of that is still in the planning phases because as I said, the standards were not yet adopted. I've also been planning on developing at SHAPE Vermont, their conference in March, doing some rollout work there, presenting. I also have been working with educators across the state on developing proficiency-based graduation requirement hierarchies. The PE one actually will be, it's done. I was just waiting for the standards to be adopted. And that will be coming out to the field as well as some supports around implementation of that. But I work regularly with educators. I have four different groups on developing those proficiency-based graduation requirements and PPIs for grade levels as well. So the goal is to really have a tight resource packet ready for the field in fall. And then hopefully, you know, as all things take time to have a nice training series that can be provided for the field potentially in the fall and then again in the spring. But yes, those are, those are things that are still up in the air. But yeah, the work has been started for quite some time because these standards have been in revision since 2021. And some of this work has been planned before that. And I think that's all I can say until things are signed on the dotted line.
Jenna and then Lyle.
Thanks. Because my question is for the group and Ian. I wonder to what extent the Vermont early learning standards are operationalized in Vermont schools? And was there any cross-walk or cross, like examination between the VELs in their growing, moving and being healthy domain? And that breaks out developmental, gross motor, fine motor, healthy decision, choice-making in those categories.
I love the VELs. So I've referenced it a lot. So especially with the social emotional health components of it too. So the VELs actually aligns to the national standards. So a lot of that is already integrated within it. And so when we're looking at the K2 level for priority performance indicators, we will be able to ensure that we are honoring and connecting the dots between the VELs and the standards that are K2 bound for physical education and health education, because there's also the social emotional competency developments. I'm actually working in a school district now where we've been looking at the VELs as a basis to, with the health education standards to have some understanding around what does SCL look like in the early grades and how we might integrate it across in an elementary classroom. So, yes.
Great. Thank you.
Lyle.
I guess I'm wondering as we approve whether it's this or other standards. And Ian, it sounds like you've got a plan to roll this out, how you're going to do the professional development. I think it would be nice to see both of those at the same time because what we're doing is we are obligating schools and teachers to implement. And that is, is time and money. And we just want to make sure that when we agree to something that we know we can actually roll it out. Sounds like you've got this planned. You know what you're going to do. But I wonder if we can also have a written plan. Doesn't have to be long. I'm not looking for essays because nobody wants to read an essay. Thank you, Ian. But if it's just, this is how we plan on rolling this out around the state, that would be great. And I don't think that it needs to hold this up, but I just think as we think about future standards, it might be nice to have an outline.
I think in my, my first slide here, I had like a very brief bullet pointed out timeline. That has gotten more meat to the bone on, on it to, over time. But I think that at least is a reference point. And I'm happy to share once things get finalized, like what the full scope of it looks like.
And I, I think too, it's an important point and it's something that we can continue to include as part of our practice at the agency as we're bringing forward new standards to provide a roadmap of that training and support for educators. And then as that's refined, we can certainly share that for the board's visibility.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments?
I think I should probably mention too, that our, there is a body that the AOE is charged with convening called the Advisory Council on Wellness and Comprehensive Health. And that was raised as a question and concern for whether these had been informed by that body or at least reviewed and received some feedback. Ian indicated that there's a, a person on that council who has been able to provide some feedback and that that council had not met at all in 24. So they have, historically, it looked like they met, the last time they met was January 2023. They have not as a body responded to these. They may individually have been involved even with providing feedback when the national standards were being updated at the national level. So there are some practitioners from Vermont who have been involved with that. There may be some of those who are on that at council who have provided feedback, but not, they have not been asked as a body to, to respond on these. And that caused our committee just a little pause to wonder if there was value in holding these up for that feedback. We hadn't realized until we heard back from one of the Vs that that is a body and wondering if they had weighed in. So we felt with having it, Ian's response to that and having concern for the ability to have these implemented and supported, that we weren't going to wait that body and the AOE's convening of the bodies they're charged to convene is not likely to take place in a timeline that would allow these standards to get the implementation support that they need and deserve. But there may be, there are ways that people who are involved with that at council may have provided feedback to these nationally updated standards. And committee, did I capture that? Well, it was our only pause, I think, as we were considering whether or not we would approve for your review. And go ahead, Ian, of course.
I would also just add that because it's written into statute that the, the committee be composed of certain people from certain professions. The committee that was active in 2023, it's, I don't believe that it would be a, a startup of just that committee because of potentially the roles of those people having changed over time. So it would no longer align with the statutory requirements. So that also would add another component. And I think that it's getting, it's more of, if we lose, it would push possibly the timeline of implementation to 2026. So I would say that that's a point of consideration. So that was my only kind of thought process. It wasn't a definitive, this is what we should do based on that. But I just thought I'd provide that context.
And so our committee felt comfortable. That these nationally updated standards, along with the resources that they provide. At the national level and in collaboration with the AOE's implementation plan. Were worthy of forwarding to the full board and we fully support that the full board would consider and approve. These updates to the PE and health standards. So that they can go into effect as soon as possible.
The other comment I'd like to share to give the board assurance that we will be reconvening on this body. And so as Ian indicated, they have not met in some time. And so there are requirements in terms of representation. So we do need to go back and ask for those. Designees to serve on this council and we'll be reconvening and launching that committee again. And they would be a body that would help support as we move forward in implementing.
And that was also the other piece that we thought that their input will be on implementation, which again is outside of. Our authority as a body, as the state board, we approved the standards. With the same concerns that Lyle and others have mentioned that they can be supported for implementation. But the implementation piece and that council's input to implementation. Is more likely to be with the focus of what they would provide feedback on. Then would be the actual standards at this point. So. For that, we, we decided they are, we felt they are good to go. And that with the commitment of the AOE that they will seek. That newly constituted council's feedback on implementation.
We can commit to that.
Thank you Tammy and Kim for leading the committee and having these robust conversations. Ian, I think that feedback that the agency was able to provide has been enormously helpful as well. So thank you. If there are no further comments or questions, I believe there are a couple of motions on the green sheet we can turn to.
I'm gonna. Okay, let me, let me give it a shot. I move that the state board of ed adopt the rewritten national physical education standards. These are learning standards and not professional standards. And that we accept the secretary's recommended action. That the board approve the 2024 Shape America National Physical Education Standards.
Thank you, Kim. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, I seconded by Gray. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting or approving the motion, please raise your hand. Sorry, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Okay, you've adopted the motion. Thank you. Kim, I'll turn it back to you.
Yeah, give me one second. That tab is buried. Just one second, folks. I apologize. Bear with me and Tammy, if you have it up, grab it. Okay, I got it. Sorry about that, folks. I move that the board adopt the revised national health education standards. These are learning standards and not professional standards. And that we accept the secretary's recommended action that the SBE approve adoption of the 2024 National Health Education Standards.
Okay. Okay, seconded by Gray again. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you.
And Jennifer, if I could just take one minute to update you on the committee's work. Because we also had the advantage of having three folks from the Act One Working Group. Present to us the, so the, the ethnic study standards. They were presented to the full board in September of 20 or October of 23. And tabled so that we could finish EQS. Charged to our group, our group was renamed and we, after the second half of our meeting on Monday. Included a presentation by that group and a reminder that while the document that was provided to the. Legislature and to the full state board is both the standards and a framework. For a, you know, a guidance document essentially. That was a helpful reminder, honestly, and it helped to, for us to also hear about their process. For the six months of work that they did to get to their proposed draft on the standards and the framework. So as just a matter of sort of giving the board a heads up that that we're pivoting, our standards committee is pivoting on that work. And we will begin requesting feedback as we did on PE and health from all those bodies. I'll, I'll get that out probably this week for, you know, a request, perhaps we also have need for some technical assistance on that. So Tammy and I'll figure out what order events is happening next. But that is the body of work we're taking up. We also have received from Amanda just the two page document that is the standards. I think that that may have been lost a little bit, that the standards are just the two pages. The framework is the more robust piece of the report. But our, our purview is adoption of standards. So we've had some public comment to request. Time on a future agenda of that committee. And so we will be working on our agenda planning for those meetings coming up. But we're meeting, I believe we're on the first, a schedule that is the first and third Mondays of every month until we're done. So that's where we're pivoted to, folks, and stay tuned on that.
So in, I saw the, the presentation, and I believe it was the same presentation that the Act One Working Group provided to the board. A year ago in August or whenever it was. The two page standards, I don't recall, I mean, and that.
It's something like a 40 page report. And so I think, I don't know which slide it is that is just the standards as opposed to examples of the framework. And what it would look like in practice. But Amanda has since sent us on our request. A separate document that sort of pulls out just those two pages that are the standards. So those will be attached to our minutes from Monday's meeting. And they didn't do another formal presentation. They, that, that meeting material that we included for Monday included what they had done in September. As a, a resource document for our conversation. But we were able to hear from, from the three folks. The process, the sort of impact and. Experience around those standards and then. Helping to distinguish for us the standards from the framework. It was, it was a really helpful conversation, pretty inspiring to understand the process a little more than we had. And it's, I think it's exciting to pivot to something. That will be harder and because it is not nationally normed at this point. But I think is really important as in a companion to help. Districts be able to implement EQS with integrity, to have a standard in the, you know. In the domain of ethnic studies.
Right. So the, the two page standard will be attached to the minutes?
Pardon? Yes, yes, it will be attached to the minutes from Monday. And yes, and I, I think we will also. I can't remember if the full report to the legislature that included all the framework. Like not just the, the slide presentation that we got. But if that is not already in our packet, it will be, we'll reference it and attach it in the minutes as well. It's a robust document. The field is using it in their learning because they are. Responsible for implementing July 1 of 25, the new EQS standards. So I think they are benefiting from the full framework. But we will get a, a formal response from AOE as part of our process. And all the stakeholder groups from what's out there, what they've heard might benefit from revision. And we will be looking for technical support as well. So. Those are the upcoming steps for our group.
All right. Well, thank you.
Welcome.
All right. So this brings us to our next agenda item, which is the annual report to the general assembly. I had circulated to the board an updated. Version that incorporates some of the comments that I received back from individual board members. And I just went in and unbolded and unitalicized the sentence about. Saying that the board had recently approved the health and PE standards. So that is now updated. So that is a correct statement. So let me just start by asking if there are any further amendments or edits. Lyle.
Do we need to, and maybe I'm missing it because I'm just rereading this now. Have we noted someplace a total budget that we're requesting? Kind of looks right now like we're asking them to add it up in their head.
No. And let me just pause. Tammy and I were supposed to have had a meeting last Friday. We had met and I, you know, provided a report to the board, I believe it was last month, that we had met with the governor's office. And requested line item adjustments to our current FY25 budget. We were also increased, asking for an increased budget for FY26 and going forward. And then we were further requesting some one-time appropriations, basically to help us update our rules. So we were supposed to have had a follow-up meeting this past Friday. At which, you know, we could have gotten feedback on the status of those requests. That meeting has been canceled, so I don't have. I don't know what the status of that is. And I think at this point, what I'm looking at and what's included in the report are the. Line item. Let's say that right. Sorry, let me just get the language right here. A line item adjustment for FY25. So I did put in those figures. And then as far as FY26 goes, you know, that has been submitted both to the governor's office and to the agency, but I have not gotten any feedback on it.
Lyle, we requested to the governor's office a budget readjustment, right? Because we're going through that process for this fiscal year. Because it looks like we are anticipated to exceed or need more funding than what we have right now. And so for this year, and that's both for the additional work for CTE rules. And also the anticipated additional external consultant for the. Act One standards, the IRS standards. So those two things were a budget adjustment. That said, well, I, I like your suggestion that I think it would be hopeful for us to just include a total budget. And maybe just as an attachment, Jennifer, include our budget request. So that it's, I think that's a great suggestion. And we have a nice write-up, Jennifer prepared a nice write-up about our budget request. So we could just say, this is our budget request and here's the dollar amount, here's the justification for that.
I think that would be important because I'm not a legislator, but if I was, I'd say, what do you want? And so I think having that appendix would be very, very important.
But I also think the justification that goes along with it can help the legislature understand sort of how we're being forward thinking in our work. Right around the, the need to update the rules. And sort of helps give some flavor to the conversation about not just what we've done this year, but where we're going in the future. So maybe Jennifer added, maybe just add it in, in a section around like looking forward, you know.
Yeah, there is a paragraph that begins looking forward to FY26. And what I wanted to do was to share my screen, but I'm actually not able to do that. So this, where I am is on page one, two, three. And it is the paragraph that says to do this work, the board respectfully requests that the legislature, one. There are three paragraphs there and it's the third paragraph that says looking to FY26 and beyond. The board generally lacks resources necessary to update its rules. I think what I'm hearing and if, if you guys are all following along. At the end of that third paragraph, what I will do is just say. And updated budget request for FY26 is included. Here and then I will hyperlink. The budget that we updated. Does that sound good?
Would that include a projection for the following year or would that not be necessary?
So the budget that I prepared has, it shows FY25, which is, you know, what we're currently in the middle of. With updated amounts for FY25, it also includes FY26, which is what the legislature is going to be considering.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Kim?
Thanks, Jennifer. So I'm gonna bring us to the independent school approvals and reapprovals. And I, I provided the feedback before, but I, I do want to kind of reiterate. I think it is probably beneficial to the legislature to understand what these committees do. And I would invite us to consider, rather than saying they've been on hiatus, that we would. Say that, you know, the committee is responsible for reviewing approvals and renewals. Of independent school applications that we receive from the AOE. In that new approvals are not happening due to the moratorium. Renewals will happen as we receive that information from the AOE. Like I, I don't think people understand what that committee does. It's no, it's not. Specific to, I don't know, 2200 or EQS or, you know, where we're updating those rules. And it is, I think it would benefit from saying what the committee does. And then saying what the process is because we are in arrears and we've not, we can't do anything until we receive. Those renewal requests from the AOE. So this isn't a matter of pointing fingers, but we need to. It is public information that we are far in arrears in renewals and we don't have anything we can do on that front. And then subsequently, I think also indicating where we have approved. Two organizations to be accrediting organizations. So we're mentioning the approval of the health and PE standards. But I think it's worth noting that we've approved two accrediting bodies, right, or three accrediting bodies.
Yeah.
And I think we should mention that. So we could indicate that this is our committee. That reviews of new applications, renewal applications and applications for. Being an approved accrediting body. And in that, you know, no new applications because of moratorium. We've received no renewal requests from the AOE, though we recognize those will be forthcoming. And we have considered and approved three accrediting bodies. So that's what I would suggest that we do a little more than say hiatus. Because I know that body has been working and it, I think it. Okay, the legislature would benefit from knowing what they do.
Okay, so let me kind of go in reverse order. And so, just so everyone's following along, this is on page two, under independent school approvals and reapprovals. So again, I'm going to take the, the me ask and as me first. So this is the, I believe, third sentence. In addition, the committee is currently in the process of reviewing applications by various accrediting organizations that seek recognition. By the board pursuant to rule 2227. by the board pursuant to rule twenty-two twenty-seven, and has recognized applications by Niaske, Aesne, and Tom.
Middle schools, maybe?
Mid.
I can't remember.
Middle State, Middle States. Association of Colleges and Schools.
Association of Colleges and Schools. As. Let me just type this, and then I'll read you what I'm writing. Um, and has approved applications by, I'm going to write out, Niaske and Aesne, um, and Middle States Association of Colleges and Schools as recognized accrediting agencies. Okay, and then turning to your first comment, and this goes back to the first sentence in that paragraph. The Board's Rule Series Twenty-two Hundred Approvals Committee oversees, um, you can help me out here with the language, oversees approvals of kindergarten, I mean, there's a bunch on in twenty-two hundred. I'm not sure that we need to list them out. Or I could.
Oh, I am sorry. I I didn't know that was to me. I would, I guess I was just broadly categorizing approval approval of newly new applications for, you know, approval of independent schools. Um, renewal applications for currently approved independent schools and approve the accrediting bodies or whatever. Something to that effect. Tom is the better um grammarian.
So I, well, and it's and it's just a a factual matter that this, that the committee, his name was changed to Rule Twenty-two Hundred Approvals because there are more entities under twenty-two hundred that come before that body, including tutorials and kindergarten and 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 post-secondary institutions. So we had at least one post-secondary institution come before our committee um in the last year. So I don't know.
Say like any school seeking approval, or I don't really know.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Through the twenty-two hundred process, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and renewal.
So the Board's Rule Series Twenty-two Hundred Approvals Committee oversees applications by any, is it fair to say school? Does that include kindergartens?
So you, so really, the the accrediting organizations fall under the twenty-two hundred rule series. You could say any organization, school or organization that falls under twenty-two hundred.
That falls within the purview of the Board's Rule Series Twenty-two Hundred. Okay. And um, then I also need to mention you know, upon receipt of the application packet by the agency or from the agency. Yes?
Uh, not, not as regards accrediting organizations. That doesn't come through the agency. All other um entities do come through the agency.
Okay. Okay, so how, so I have the first sentence now reading. The Board's Rule Series Twenty-two Hundred Approvals Committee oversees applications by any organization that falls within the purview of the Board's Rule Series Twenty-two Hundred. Um, upon receipt of the application packet by the organization.
So so maybe, so maybe, uh, maybe strike upon receipt.
Okay.
And then just a factual statement, these applications uh, from um schools, um, kindergartens and post-secondary institutions come through um, through the agency, whereas applications from accrediting organizations come directly to the committee.
And Tom and Jennifer, would it be accurate to say these applications for approval and and renewal? And then you're delineating which of those categories. So approval and renewal.
And I, and Jennifer, I don't know, you asked the question, do you want to list them all? A way out of it is to say for most for most um schools, and then you could give some examples, but the the one, the one exception is that the accrediting organizations does not come through the agency.
Okay. Um, okay, for most schools, these applications come to or through the agency. Although, um, yeah, semicolon. Okay, and Kim, I I kind of lost what you were saying about um applications and reapproval. Can you just say that again?
I, um, I'm not exactly sure where we are in terms of how it fits in the language of the letter, but that's okay. I what my essence was, we, we, when we receive, is it there?
I I'm now able to share. Um, so hang on just a second.
And I know it's not fun to be doing this, like.
Oh, no. So are you all able to see my screen now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, this will make it a lot easier. So the Board's Rule Series Twenty-two Hundred Approvals Committee oversees applications by any organization that falls within the purview of the Board's Rule Series Twenty-two Hundred. For most schools, these applications come to the board through the agency. Applications from accrediting agencies um are submitted directly to the board.
Yeah, and I would say, maybe instead of saying for for most schools, you can say for the most part.
Okay.
Because, um, because it's all schools, but.
And I think what I was, what I was suggesting, Jennifer, is that we call attention to the fact that applications for new approvals have been on moratorium since whatever the statutory reference is.
How about if I just say there have been no new applications for approval since the um General Assembly imposed a moratorium.
And I think it's approval of in independent schools, right?
Yeah.
Is there something else that we did approve? I think, I don't remember what what it was, but we approved something. Yeah.
Okay. Um, does anyone happen to know the name or the number of the act? If not, I I'm happy to trace that down.
Yeah.
Um, and then how about if I say, applications for independent school reapprovals are currently awaiting delivery by the agency of the application packet? Lead to the forward of the application packet? Does that seem good to people?
Jennifer, I had a, I had a suggestion also.
Okay.
Um, I think it would be helpful to have consistent messaging from the agency and the state board regarding the backlog. Um, so we have provided a response to the state auditor's office along with the state board. And so the language we used, which we shared with you previously, um, was stating that the agency is currently experiencing a backlog of independent school approvals, which has resulted from a combination of factors, including a pause in site reviews during the COVID nineteen response and recovery, transition time in response to new rule amendments, and litigation filed against the state and several school districts.
Okay, I think that would be a good, and you could just get that from Zoe later, Jennifer, you don't need to put it. But I think it would appropriately be there. I think it is just really important. We're recognizing there is a backlog. And we are not in a position to be able to do anything about it while the AOE is um experiencing those things, and we can't do anything until we get it. So I think leading the sentence by saying as we receive that, but then the sentence following that is what Zoe said, I think, in my mind. However, that works in the flow of the paragraph. Um, because I think that explains the responsibilities, the committee, and sort of where we are on those. And then you can wrap up with the ones we did approve in the the accrediting agencies.
And again, for consistency, I think it would be important to recognize that the agency has presented the state board with a plan to address the backlogs, and we did mention that in our report to the state auditor.
Yeah.
So I know that. For you specifically, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, and it it might be that we, I don't know if it's makes sense, but we attached that as an attachment in the document. I I know that I raised my concern regarding um, that schedule, but you know, again, that will be beyond my term on this, on this group. But I think, you know, for those who are concerned about the backlog, it would at least give them a lack to the plan, a link to the plan that you all have, Zoe, for how that'll be addressed. I think importantly too, is the concern regarding therapeutic schools, so I'll reiterate it. And if that becomes an issue for you all to need to deal with, it will, you know, it'll be evident what the intention and plan is. And you all can litigate that later.
Okay, so you all can see the first part. Board's Rule Series Twenty-two Hundred Approval Committee oversees applications by any organization that falls within the purview of the Board's Rule Series Twenty-two Hundred. For the most part, these applications come to the board through the agency. Applications from accrediting agencies are submitted directly to the board. There have been no new applications for independent school approvals since the General Assembly imposed a moratorium and act, I figured that out. Applications for independent school reapprovals are currently awaiting delivery by the agency to the board, that's a little clunky, of the application packet. The agency is currently experiencing a backlog. I will include the information or the the sentence that Joe Zoe just mentioned. The agency has presented the board with a plan, I will insert the hyperlink, to address this backlog. And then I think what I would do is say, delete all of this, and then continue on to, in the meantime, the committee considered and recommended to the full board the approval of two post-secondary schools. In addition, um, the committee is currently in the process of reviewing applications by various accrediting organizations that seek recognition by the board pursuant to rule twenty-two twenty-seven, and has approved applications by um, Niaske, Aesne, and Middle States Association of colleges and schools as recognized accrediting agencies. The board anticipates that its oversight of independent school requests for reapproval will resume this spring, and it looks forward to working with the agency to ensure the timely review of those reapprovals that has extended beyond the renewal dates due to updates to the rules and agency efforts to help schools understand and comply with them. Does that sound good?
Just a, you know, just a question of why we would name the accrediting agencies and not the post-secondary schools, and whether or not this, whether or not this is a um, whether or not, once we start to approve um independent schools, will you list all those?
Okay. Um, so just say approved applications by three.
Yeah, that's what I would say. I would be consistent with what you said about post-secondary schools.
You know what? I think so, before you get rid of that, because the accrediting agencies are allowing for an abbreviated process of both approval and renewal. I think knowing now, because was it seventy-seven hundred that went away? Whatever the number was, that went away and became part of twenty-two hundred. Um, I think actually stating what the accrediting agencies are that we are relying on is important, Tom. I don't know, you're right, it could become cumbersome in a future year if the moratorium is gone and if we were sort of providing a list of all renewals. I think we could, though, in this document, it would not be unheard of to hyperlink the product of our work, which could be a separate report of the Independent Schools Committee that says this is what we approved this year, you know, like, I think that's valuable to the the General Assembly. Um, I just think for, especially for um the accrediting agencies, we should listen, but I a hundred percent take your point that it might become a big document in future years. Um.
Board members, what do you think?
Well, I wouldn't make it any longer than it is right now. And I like the idea of the hyperlinks, because if they're interested, they can click on it. If they're not, they can keep going. If it's beyond three pages, they've got a lot to read. They've got other things on their mind.
I agree. I think the hyperlinks are really useful.
Um, one, um, one word I think we need to change, uh, instead of by three, shouldn't it be of three? Thank you.
Okay, so I'm hearing more in favor of just saying three accrediting agencies. And then should I put a hyperlink on those three? No, I mean, I get Tom's point, because we don't list out, you know, schools that have been reapproved. Um, and are we going to, you know, if if.
But for this year, though, we haven't had any, right, Jennifer? I'm sorry to interrupt. I just.
Well, we had two um post-secondary schools, and the point is, is like I just said, two, I didn't say which two. Um, so for, and we never, in past reports, we have never said which schools we have reapproved. We just say, you know, we're in charge of reapprovals. So um, I think Tom's point is, we have not listed out with specificity the names of various organizations, so why are we doing it now? And Kim, I hear what you're saying. Um, I'm just looking for, you know, whether there's general board consensus and listing it out or not.
I guess I would reiterate just for for clarity, since we used to have this big long list, and we don't have it anymore, and it went away at a date certain, December one. So um, the, I will just say again that I feel like the accredited, we are relying on accrediting agencies for an abbreviated process for approval and renewal. We'll do that when we start seeing renewal requests from the agency. Those that are accredited aren't getting a site visit, and we are, we made a change in who is accredited to what our accrediting agencies are for recognition. So I feel like that one's important. If there's only two um, secondary that we approved, I don't think it makes it that much longer to put in two names. And then future years, I would, I think a hyperlink to just have a document that says three school, three accrediting agencies is an unnecessary click.
Okay.
It's what I would say on that, but you guys decide.
Yeah, my only comment is that, yeah, my only comment is, um, if if hyperlink is the way that we're going to go, we could start it now. The other, but I think a more important piece of information might be that these three agencies were on the previous seven thousand list. These three were on the previous list. Oh, Aesne was not, but they were, we had previously approved Aesne, they just hadn't made it into the list. These were these ones that were already approved accrediting agencies by the state. These, these are not, these are not new players. These are people that were previously approved to accredit schools in Vermont.
But Tom, if they didn't go through this uh process before December, or whatever it was, wasn't it true that they start up as brand new as opposed to being reblessed, if you will, by your group and our group or the full body? Like, there was something about December one that was meaningful.
Right, yeah, they they were, everybody who was on that list was a recognized accreditor until December one. Um, and then, then they come before our committee to be looked at.
So I have to say, I don't feel terribly strongly, you know, one way or the other, um, you know, if we, there were two separate um meetings. One was October, one was November, um, that we um, recognized these three accrediting agencies. Um, but I'm happy to. Um, but I'm happy to do a hyperlink to the minutes of the Board's meetings that do that, or I, I don't really the other.
Yeah. Uh, for, for me, for me, I like setting, um, setting up a system that's going to be, that's going to work going forward. Um, I would have one hyperlink that would have organizations and schools approved by the committee and where I would um, attach it to the report every year.
Okay. Well, here's a question because we're supposed to be posting this on our, um, webpage, have we? Uh, because maybe that's the way to do it is to link it to our webpage.
Yeah, I don't know.
I will figure that out, but um, do we have any more comments about this paragraph? As it has been updated? And act, well, let me just say this, if I'm filling in language here from the Agency of Education about the agencies currently experiencing a backlog, fill that language in. It seems to me that this final sentence, um, the Board anticipates that its oversight of independent school requests for reapproval, we would assume in the spring. And it looks forward to working with the agency to ensure timely review of those reapprovals. Um, I think we could end the sentence there because the rest of it is basically what I just heard Zoe say. So are we comfortable with me deleting this?
Yeah, because you're up, up saying the other part.
Yeah, okay.
I was thinking that sounded redundant.
So Kim, those are your comments. And then now that I'm able to share my screen, um, Lyle, I added in, and this is where we were looking to FY26 and beyond. The Board generally lacks the resources necessary to update its rules, many of which are a couple of decades old. Kim, this is your summary that has been hyperlink here. Or to perform all of its statutory duties, this places the Board in uncomfortable position. Um, so on and so on. The Board either requires increased resources to fulfill its duties, or some of its duties should be delegated to others. An updated budget request for FY26 is included here. Insert link.
So Jennifer, I'm wondering if that's the place to do it because I think in bullet point two and three, you also um, add budgetary
Hmm.
um, uh, additions.
Yeah.
And, um, and my, my question was, um, do we know what, um, other boards are compensated? Because I think that's the reference that you have there. Um, I would, I wasn't going to raise it, but if we are going to do a, a total budget, then, um, some kind of estimation of what bullet point three would cost, that seems trickier, but, um, we might have an idea from other boards.
So I heard from the Governor's Office, um, that they were looking into this and I am sort of leaving it to them. Um, it's, I'm not sure that I necessarily need to be, um, you know, shaking the legislature down for more money. Um, but if we are out of line with other boards, then that would be good information to have, in which case, you know, I think there's a bigger argument for, um, aligning us. I've heard from both Tammy and Kim that there are plenty of boards that um, only receive the $50 per meeting or 625 an hour. Um, I guess the question is, I know there are also other boards that make a lot more than that. And where does the board fit in that spectrum? So, that's why I left it the way I did.
I don't mean to end this conversation prematurely, but we had a long conversation about the Commission of the Future of Public Education. Um, should we table to allow, um, Jennifer to do her magic with this and move it forward?
Well, do we have any other, um, suggested edits? Because I think at this point you guys can see the updates that I've made. And if everyone is comfortable with this, then what I would look for is a motion to, um, authorize me to make final updates and then submit it to the General Assembly, the Governor's Office, and have it posted on our website.
I will make that motion that we allow Jennifer to complete this with all the input we gave her and to get it posted and sent out to everybody it needs to go to.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, Jennifer, to Lyle's point, the Commission is not mentioned in this document anywhere. And I think if nowhere else in the very first paragraph or second paragraph, I guess, work performed in 2024, I think would benefit from the, um, inclusion of your representation on the Commission.
Okay, so I'm still sharing my screen. What if I say the Board's Chair?
As representative or whatever, has served on the Commission.
The Board on the Commission of the future of public education in Vermont and also serves on the Commission's Steering Committee. I'm going to make that good?
Wow. And it like, I provided the feedback on when I sent it to you. And I know it's not something that you embrace, but the intro paragraph sounds like we're doing it, but we're not technically required to because they didn't fix the law when they, um, you know, took the responsibility for education policy from the State Board of Ed. So as a matter of tone, and I, and I told you that when I sent it before, it does sound a little bit, the intro sounds a little bit like we are, um, we're doing it, but we're not, you know, reporting on the development. I think we could just as easily say, you know, we're responsible for providing a report to the legislature. And, um, and we feel it important for you to understand the work we've been able to do or something like that. I don't, I don't think we need to wordsmith it. I'm offering that. I offered it before. I don't know if others feel the tone that set sounds similarly where it, it, it isn't, it's like a preamble. It doesn't really affect anything except that it, the nevertheless makes me feel like we're like, okay, we're doing it anyway because we think it's important rather than it's in fact the law we need to report to them manually. Even if the law language isn't clean.
So I, I, I mean, this is boilerplate from the last two annual reports. So I just kind of cut and pasted that into this year's reports. And this hasn't changed, but, um, my point was, I mean, if you look at you know, what we are supposed to be providing a report on, we don't do that. So, you know, by that logic, there's no report to submit, but we do think it's important to submit a report because I think it's important for the, um, General Assembly to know what we are doing and what we would like to be doing. So I'm looking at this as a communication tool. I didn't mean the tone to feel unfriendly. Um, and I don't, so I don't know if it's hitting other people that way.
Yeah, I think it's a good, I think it's a good clarification to say this is what we were, this is what we're supposed to be doing, but at the same point, that's not what we're supposed to be doing. So here's what we've been doing. I think I don't, I didn't see it as unfriendly unless, um, unless the outdated, the term outdated language seems um, unfriendly, but it's true.
Do we like preparing, is responsible for preparing and submitting more than has a duty to?
Well, I think, I, I mean, if we're, if we're wordsmithing it still, um, and I realize the time we're taking here, but the, um, I think it's the, the I think that this next sentence would be although, um, Act 66 removed the Board's authority to establish and advance education policy of the state of Vermont, comma, the Board felt it was important to report on. Like, um, um, that, that clarifies why we're not doing what it says without labeling the language.
And I appreciate that tonally. Uh, I think, I don't think we need nevertheless at all. But whatever, it, it, or I, I didn't read it with your edit, like to the, trying to read along. I think both of those things change the tone of it, Tom. So I think, um,
Okay.
The, or, and we could say the Board continues to feel that it's important to report on the work because it's not past tense. We continue to feel we're, there, there's no scenario I, I picture where this body should not be reporting to the, the General Assembly on the work it does.
It is. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any further comments? It's been moved by Rich, um, seconded by Gray. And if there's no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. I'm abstaining, um, but I will get this done. Um, the motion carries and, um, thank you all for your feedback. This was really helpful. Um, Bobby. Sorry. Um, okay, bear with me here. Stop sharing. Okay. I stopped sharing my screen. I think we're back. Um, okay. So this brings us to the update on the Commission of Future Public, the Future of Public Education in Vermont. Um, so the timeline on this is I received the draft report, um, on Friday, I believe, that I forwarded to the Board. Um, and indicated that I anticipated that there would be an upcoming update to that report. In full transparency, that update came on Friday night. Um, from Zoe, it was not posted until after the Commission's meeting on Monday morning. And based on prior conversations that I had with Megan Roy, the Chair, um, she did not feel comfortable with me or any other Commission member sharing things with their underlying bodies until whatever it was had been posted in the Commission's, um, webpage. So I did not send to the Board based on that direction, you know, from the Commission with the Board, although there was the, um, indication that I sent in the email to the Board that I anticipated that some of that language would change. Um, I can let Zoe speak to the changes, but the language, although it was new in the report, it was not new language. It was language that Zoe pulled out of reports that the agency had prepared. And the Commission met in live time on Monday morning. We originally had a deadline of December 15th to submit the report. Um, we had decided at our last meeting on December 2nd that we would extend that deadline to December 20th. Um, with the blessing of Representative Conlon, who was on the committee. Um, and so we met on Monday to, um, make the final decision about the report. Um, the report has not yet been finalized. When it is, I will absolutely share it with the Board. Um, but I've not seen any copy of the report since we had our meeting on Monday. So I'm happy to walk through the, um, update from the Commission, the changes that were made and why, um, before we start our discussion, if that's good with people.
I'm happy to also put a link in the chat if people want to look at it real time. Um, it is available on the website.
I was just gonna ask, it's, is it in our material or it's not in our material?
So the, the update from Zoe that came out on Sunday night, um, is not in the material. Um, but that was what came to Commission members on Sunday night and wasn't posted until after the meeting. And so again, this is in live time. We met on Monday. Um, we made further updates based on the report that Zoe had updated on Sunday night. And what I'm saying is I've not seen an updated version of the report since our meeting on Monday.
Is there a vote on the report on Monday?
There was, because we had a, it had been a December 15th deadline and we extended it to December 20th.
Can we zoom out just for a minute, Jennifer, so that I can, and I don't want to belabor it, but I think yes, it would be great to have you walk through what's there and what's changed, but more broadly, we really haven't had a conversation about the body of work that's happening. If, if we're following minutes, then we are informed. And if we're not following minutes, I don't have a, I don't have a sense because there's minutes from subcommittees, there's minutes, like the things we've gotten over the months that this group has convened have been links to minutes of what's gone on in a variety of those meetings, the commissions, the subcommittees, the whatever. I don't have a big picture understanding of what work is happening in that commission. And it's in theory, some of the most important work happening. And I certainly don't have any idea how you have been representing the Board in those conversations, because one, I'm not sure that I have a, again, except for the, it's isolated quick review of minutes. I don't have a big picture and I don't know if others feel they benefit from that sort of, let's zoom out before we zoom in to the details, or if by going through the report, that's how you're going to update us on what's been going on. I, you, you tell me whether that, which route, but I don't have a good handle.
To be clear, I mean, anyone can attend any meeting, right? Um, you are all welcome to attend any meeting of the Commission or any of its subcommittees, but we've had this on the agenda. Um, you know, I've included every single set of minutes at every month that we've had, um, meetings and we have had updates. Um, and you're, I mean, you mentioned this at the beginning, um, we have not had detailed updates um, from the Commission because the Board decided at our, you know, meetings that we've had this fall that the time that we spent on Commission updates was, you know, that the Board seemed satisfied. So I'm happy to kind of unpack and get into more detail today. Um, but I just wanted to be clear that, you know, we've had opportunities at every Board meeting to have conversations. So I'm happy to have more conversations, um, about this, about the changes to the report, about the vote, um, and what's in the report and what's not in the report and why. Um, but let me turn to Zoe and then Tammy.
Yeah, I'd be happy to walk through just a kind of high level overview of the timeline, um, and kind of bring us all up to speed and then walk through where there were points of discussion and debate with the Commission, if that would be helpful to frame the conversation. Would, would you like me to walk through that?
Yes, thank you.
So at a high level, just in terms of the structure of the Commission, uh, the Commission meets monthly and then per statute, there is a steering committee that meets more regularly, um, to guide some of the work around the subcommittees, um, and the, the direction and agenda setting for the larger Commission. Additionally, within the Commission, there are two subcommittees that have been formed. One subcommittee is focused on communication and public engagement, and the other subcommittee is focused on education finance. Um, on December 2nd, the full Commission met, um, in the hopes of reviewing and approving the report. Um, members felt like we needed more time, um, to fully digest the report. And there was also some um, concern around certain aspects of the report, um, that was a focus of a lot of discussion. Um, and then at that point, the Commission, as Jennifer mentioned, decided to push out the submission of the report to give the education finance subcommittee time to address some of the questions and the full Commission time to evaluate some of these outstanding items before reconvening on December 16th, uh, to review an updated report for a vote. Um, just in terms of structure and process, on December, um, the finance subcommittee did meet on December 9th, and I'll share the focus of that conversation. And then the full Commission met on December 16th. After the full Commission meeting, the Steering Committee met, the Commission authorized the Steering Committee to make, to wordsmith some of the changes that the Commission agreed upon. Um, that happened during the Steering Committee and, um, right now, the report is in the final stages of formatting. Um, and should be submitted, um, any, definitely this. So in terms of, I think what's important to really highlight is where were there areas of debate, discussion? So when we reconvened on December 2nd, um, the version of the report included, um, a, in a link to, let me, let me back step a minute. A lot of the conversation is around, I'll break it down into data and then to, to ideas around policy. Related to data, the Agency of Education has received several requests, which we have processed and reported back to the commission. We included an overview table that identified each specific request, the description of that request, and the data source, along with what we provided to the commission in, in the way of a report or a link to an existing report on our website. We also noted in that data overview that there were certain areas that the commission decided, or the finance subcommittee decided was not needed at this time, or needed to be further evaluated before going down that path of analyzing and reporting additional data. So in our first discussion around data, the, that table was included to list the specific request. And for, through that conversation, we really wanted to make sure that the general assembly understood that there was some analysis that had been conducted and some findings that are really guiding the work. And so through that, I offered to rewrite that section of the data report to bring in some of the analysis we've already reported through our state education profile and also the education funding report that we released. So that section was updated with the content that had been previously shared and reviewed by the committee and also published in the wider community for broader consumption of Vermonters to understand the current state of education. And I'll walk through some of the details and we can pull up the report so you can see what's included in that summary. The other area was focusing on the work of the education finance subcommittee. The finance subcommittee organized a working document to begin tracking ideas that could be potential policy considerations. There was a lot of debate around including this list. The list is absolutely not a representation of policy recommendations. And so the commission struggled with the decision around whether or not to include that list of ideas. For those of you who have seen the list of ideas, it is currently in the public sphere. It is part of meeting minutes of the education finance subcommittee. But the issue is that, that I raised and I voiced concerns was that it does not represent a coherent set of policy recommendations. In fact, many of the ideas are contradictory in nature and have not been validated by data. There's also some assumptions built into those ideas that are not substantiated and are built on faulty information of understanding our education, funding and finance policies. So I actually, at the education finance subcommittee, before we met as a full commission, expressed my strong reservation of voting on the report if that list were included because I had reservations around that being misinterpreted as policy when we'd all indicated that it was not at a phase yet, that it could be recommended as policy and it required further vetting. So through that conversation, we went back to the commission and recommended that instead of, that was really the focus of the discussion, was whether or not to include that list of policy, that list of ideas. I want to be clear that everyone on the commission agreed that it was not a set of policy recommendations. But our concern was being able to frame that as such. Because people are really eager to get to a solution. And in the report, you know, the chair framed it very clearly that these are ideas, not policy recommendations. But we continue to hear the public responding and interacting with this list of ideas as policy. And so we wanted to make sure that it was absolutely clear that this did not represent a recommendation by the commission for specific policies. So that really was a crux of a lot of the debate and discussion for the commission. In the revision that I submitted back to the commission, I offered alternate language, should the commission decide to exclude that list of policy ideas. Certainly, we recognize that that list of, that list of ideas brings up new questions and factors that absolutely should be considered by the commission, but needs to be more fully vetted before it is reported as a list to the commission. And the rationale is that, as you all know, there's a lot of weight of importance for what the commission does. And I was concerned that including the list as an appendix would give weight and importance to a list of ideas that have not been fully vetted, and it would be misinterpreted as policy. As a commission, we had a really robust conversation around this and really came to a conclusion that we would not include that list of ideas as an appendix. However, throughout the document, there's a lot of different, throughout the report, there's a lot of different documents referenced. For example, the report references the memo produced by VASBO VSA. And I think there's another group, VASBO and VSBA around recommendations around budgeting. It includes reference to the governor's letters to education leaders. And includes reports that the agency has submitted. And so as this list is part of the meeting minutes of the education finance subcommittee, it is referenced. So as that, because of that, I wanted to make sure, and I think as a steering committee and a commission, we wanted to make sure it was very clear that this really was a list of ideas and not policy recommendations. So we've added a disclaimer on that list that very clearly indicates that this is an initial brainstorming and identifies that it does not represent any policy recommendation by a commission member. It also notes that some of the ideas are based on incomplete or faulty understanding of education program and policy, and that the commission will work to vet that and correct any inaccuracies and inconsistencies for the benefit of future planning. So that's really where we came to. In terms of the mechanics around how things were approved, there was, I did make some suggested edits. Other committee members did as well. We reviewed those at the meeting on Monday as a full commission. And then the commission gave authorization to the steering committee to wordsmith certain sections of that, which then we met right after the commission meeting to do and finalize. And everyone will have access to the full report this week.
So and let me just add to that, because at the commission meeting, when we were discussing the issue of whether or not to include this brainstorm document from the ed finance committee, in addition to the point that Zoe mentioned about how it was being picked up in various news sources that these were policy recommendations, even though at our December 2nd meeting, we were very clear that they weren't. Because, and, and this goes to my bigger point, we as a commission have not had a chance to discuss these ideas. So I mean, I think the ed finance committee maybe has started to unpack some of the ideas, but as a commission, we have not. We've not had any discussions about any of the policy ideas that are on that document. And then my other concern is that we have received other suggestions in public comment. And those suggestions have not been, you know, considered by the ed finance committee. They've not been included in the spreadsheet. And it felt unfair to me to sort of elevate the decision or the, the brainstorm document that had been generated by the ed finance subcommittee to the exclusion of other ideas that have come out of public comment. Because the commission has been very clear in its goal of being accessible to the public, really wanting to receive feedback from the public and being, you know, very, very open in how we take in information. So I mentioned that as one of my concerns about including that document at the meeting on Monday.
And I appreciate it, Jennifer, you bringing that up as a point. And I, I think that's really validating to the public. Many people have been engaged writing letters, writing emails, and actually coming and verbally presenting to the commission. Those ideas have not been fully incorporated in this brainstorming document. So on that disclaimer, that will be included too, as part of the reason that wasn't the, these ideas and brainstorming list is not considered part of the formal report as an appendix. So I would say, in conclusion, the, the report really summarizes the conversation of the commission and outlines the charge. It walks through the data analysis conducted to date, largely based on the agency's reports. And then it highlights the process by which the education finance subcommittee has engaged in brainstorming and is very clear that there are not specific policy recommendations ready to present to the general assembly. The, the final section of that report indicates that the commission will be bringing on a public engagement consultant and that there's a recommendation to continue to partner with the commission to explore policy considerations, both in the short and long term as the general assembly reconvenes.
And I think it's fair to say that the bulk of the work of the commission that's been done, you know, since it convened is one, and this has really fallen largely on the agency's and Zoe's shoulders, compiling data and, you know, having that be collected so that the commission can, commission has not yet, but the commission can start analyzing the data and really start analyzing any suggestions through the lens of the data. It has taken the agency time to produce a vast volume of data. So we, the, the commission really hasn't engaged in substantive work. And we were, you know, really at the point where we don't have recommendations to make because we have not had substantive discussions, because a lot of what we've been doing is collecting data, but we've not had a chance to actually get into the data. The other thing too, is we've stood up our committees. The educa, communication and engagement committee is in the final stages of retaining a consultant, but that hasn't happened yet either. So we decided in our steering committee meeting on Monday, usually we have monthly meetings that are then followed by a community engagement session. And we decided that in January, we're not going to do that because the consultant won't be retained yet. So we've tabled that part of the January meeting. And my assumption is that by February, we will have the consultant in place and that the consultant will then start leading those community sessions. Let me pause there. Tammy and Kim, I see you both have your hands raised.
Yeah, thanks Zoe, Jennifer, for the rundown on that. I sort of, two lines of questioning and sort of they stem from two separate, but somewhat interrelated concerns. The first line is that, you know, I'm concerned about how the board's perspective and voice is being represented on the commission. Right? And so when Jennifer votes on a, on a report, it reflects, I think, sort of what the state board thinks and our approval of that document. And I understand there were some timing delays, these things happen. But in the end, there was votes of vote on Monday on a document that I'm not sure I would support for many reasons. And we haven't had a conversation about that at all on the board. And I also understand that the vote on Monday was not unanimous. There were a number of people who voted against this, including a former board chair, Oliver Olson, voted against this, primarily because they didn't have enough time to review the data and think through the implications of the report. So I think that's actually quite noteworthy. I'm not, I'm not done.
Well, can I correct that? Because that, that was not why Oliver, I mean, Oliver raised, he wanted to have specific recommendations in there that had nothing to do with the spreadsheet. Had nothing to do with the spreadsheet.
I understand. I'm noting that Oliver voted against it and two other people voted against it as well. Both Jeff Fannin and John Castle. And there were discussions among the group because there were things late and people did not feel they'd have enough time to review this. That happens, right? But, you know, a vote was made on behalf of the board. And we haven't had a chance to discuss what that vote, what the content was underlying that, was underlying that vote. And, you know, I think that's just an important piece of the puzzle here. And to Kim's point, I know we've been having updates, but it's very different when we start to take votes, right? Because it implies that state board has signed off on something or that we are in some agreement on this. And I'm not sure we are. We haven't had a discussion about this. To Zoe's point, and I appreciate all the work that Zoe and her team have been doing around agency work, is yeah, there's a lot of information out here and there is a lot of information that needs to be vetted. And we can talk about it maybe in your agency presentation, or we can talk about it now. But some of the data that are being presented are, have some issues with them. And I would really have some caution with some of the statements and some of the conclusions that are being based on those data. For example, in the report that was revised on Monday, there are statements about sort of the increase in per pupil spending. And there have been increases in per pupil spending to the tune of, I think, what is, what did you report? About 22.4% change since fiscal year 20. But if you adjust those numbers, and everybody in the school finance community is doing this right now for inflation, what we find is that in real dollars, the change is actually only $697. Right? And yet, the report suggests that the reason for the increase in per pupil spending is federal revenues. No, the reason for increase per pupil spending on its face is inflation. And when we construct meaning around increases like that and construct meaning around numbers like that, it leads us down certain policy roads. Right? And so an alternative interpretation on those data could be that districts have shown great restraint, even in the fact, even in the time of having increased federal dollars. And that in real purchasing power, the amount of dollars that agencies have, the amount of spending on average has increased to only be $697 per people. That's actually quite incredible, if you think about it. And it really speaks to a different set of potential policy conclusions. But it seems like those are the kinds of conversations we should be having around these data, right? And before we start voting on reports that include those data and those conclusions, the board should have had an opportunity to think through and provide that kind of feedback and, right, on that. And to Zoe's point, I think the agency is very open and welcoming to that kind of feedback and would have been interested in hearing that as a part of the conversation. Instead, we have a report that's been voted on and we've had no discussion about it as a board. And that's just one example. I have a list of things in here that I think are really important and meaningful things that we should be talking about in this report. And while I agree with the decision not to include recommendations from, I mean, the thought document from the school finance subcommittee, Zoe, I agree with you. I think that that easily can be misinterpreted as policy recommendations. Right? We, right, like not including that also, right, like it was more of a timing issue. Right? And so that's also a consideration. And I think you said that the reports can be updated to be more explicit around sort of why that wasn't included. But that, you know, that's uninformation that we had. And so I think this is, this, we've got a process conversation to have. And then with respect to that process, there's content in this report that I think we need to discuss and we need to have a voice in that before this report was approved, because now by virtue of a state board, our representative voting for it, it seems as if we've all approved this. And I could not approve this report at this point. At least the draft that I've seen. I could not vote to approve this report.
So Tammy, I hear you. And I think this is part of the, the clunky nature of scheduling of meetings and statutory deadlines. I am the delegate of the board, but I mean, I think I don't know how any delegate on the commission could have come up with a different answer. I don't think the VSBA, you know, sent a survey out to its board. I mean, I didn't receive one and I'm a member of the VSBA. The VSBA representative voted as she felt comfortable and as did I. So I think part of it is just the nature of the beast where there is a vote, I sent out what I had to this board on Friday and invited comments. And I heard back from one person, two people. And so I, I did my best, but I mean, the other answer is I could have abstained because I didn't have.
Yeah, you could have.
I could have, absolutely. And so, I mean, I think if that's the pattern, then I think it will be unlikely that I will ever be able to vote on something because things are going to happen between when the board last met and when the commission is meeting. But I think, you know, the board has delegated to the chair, the responsive, I mean, the board hasn't, the statute did, delegated to the chair, the position on the commission. And so at every pass, I am, you know, providing updates to the board at every meeting that we've had since the commission was formed. And I'm trying to be open in my lines of communication, but as you well know, things happen on the fly and I have to make my decision. And the other point is, you are welcome to submit public comment. I mean, you're welcome to submit public comment to Zoe about inflation. You are welcome to submit public comment about your disagreement with the report. Anyone can do that. I mean, you're not precluded from doing that.
Oh, of course I can. And I, and I likely will. But I, I think, and I appreciate timing, right? But I think there is a real difference, having done this work for a very long time. There's a difference between tinkering around the margins and substantive, and major substantive changes. The version of the report that I was given an opportunity to review and comment on between 5 o'clock on Friday-ish and 5 o'clock on Sunday. five o'clock on Friday-ish and five o'clock on Sunday-ish, looks nothing like the report that was voted on. So, I mean, I understand the conundrum, I understand the conundrum. And so perhaps then the solution here is I, you know, you'll have to, you know, make the decisions about how you want to vote. But I, I mean, I'm going to go on record as I don't support that vote on this report.
Okay. Let me turn to Zoe and then I see Tom and right, maybe it's Tom and then Kim.
Yeah, I, I'm not going to speak to process. I just wanted to speak to the specific updates provided by the agency and the section of the report related to data. So in the original report, it referenced both of the publications that the agency submitted. The only difference in the revised report is that it provides a summary of what was included in those reports. It does not come to conclusions. It says these are data that the commission reviewed and this is what those reports presented. In terms of actual data validation, the agency has been through a very thorough process with the field of validating this data over the past several months. And we re-released the state education profile report to include the additional analysis. To your point around expenditures, it is not factoring in inflation. That's something we can look at, but it is peeling back the onion of the different types of spending and understanding the complexity around that as we move forward with planning and thinking intentionally around how do we promote a system that ensures equity? And considering what that looks like from state funds, what that looks like in federal dollars. So just wanted to clarify that the data presented went through a very robust validation process with the field that it is not conclusive, it's laying out, this is what the analysis showed. And certainly there are going to be, we are very clear in the report that we've submitted as an agency that this is the tip of the iceberg in terms of planning. But a lot of these broad trends are going to continue to hold. So even through the validation and the updates that we made, the, the high level trends are very consistent and they have been for some time in Vermont.
Okay, Tom and then Kim and then Tammy.
Thank you. I'm just going to make a very quick point that on all, all the boards that I've been on as a representative or a delegate from an organization, I can't remember a time when I was asked to go back to get feedback from the group in the, before a, in the middle of a vote. But that said, if that's what is expected from this commission, if it is a representative, made up of representatives organizations and the expectation is that those representatives go back to their organizations, then the commission needs to adjust its timeline for how it's doing its work. But, uh, you know, a delegate is a delegate and when things are happening in real time, my experience is that they vote according to their best judgment and conscience. And so if, if that's not the way it is, the commission needs to address its, the way it does its work and its timeline.
Thanks. I, I can bring that with Megan too and just see if other organizations are feeling the same or having the same conversations with their constituents. Kim and then Tammy.
Sorry Jennifer, I'm clicking the mute off, sorry. So thanks for the overview Zoe and I think I'll comment on a couple of things. Jennifer, you're a member of the V S B A, but I am suspecting that the V S B A delegate has, you know, having been on the board of the V S B A and the executive committee of the V S B A, there are sort of real time opportunities to provide feedback so whomever is representing the body is able to do so, you know, particularly around items that are going to be a vote. So there was a legislative committee of the V S B A that or the, and/or the executive committee that would have been able to have, if you were getting a document at midnight on Sunday and needing to act on it on Monday, that delegate would have had that circulated for feedback to either vote or not vote. And I think understandably, we don't have a legislative committee. It, this body used to. And I think would benefit from doing so in the future. Again, a problem for you guys to consider moving forward. I strongly suggest that. So that you have and a representative group of this body to provide you more real time response. And I just think it's terrible practice that any public body would be taking action on information received at midnight the night before or whatever, anytime the night before a vote of particularly of a document that's going to be released publicly. It just is not good practice and it doesn't provide for thorough consideration. And I think that's unfortunately going to reflect poorly on the body that is trying to do some pretty impactful work. Our process, so that, that is one, I provide you that information and feedback. I think there are tools available to you that you should be leveraging. I, particularly if you are representing the state board of ed as an independent representation on that commission and not as a conjoined representation with the A O E. I, I appreciate Zoe's update and overview, but that is more conversation and information than we've had outside of the links to minutes of the public meetings. It is really hard, like even just sort of flow charting it, there's the steering committee, the full commission, two different committees other than the steering committee, right? I'm hearing like communication and at finance and then there's overlap on those committees. And I literally think the flow chart of what's happening on that commission, not necessarily reflective on you guys, but like the public and as a matter of transparency would have to attend endless hours of meetings to be kept up in the way you're suggesting. And that the suggestion is that the state board individual members can show up and offer public comment is also disingenuous to what I would expect of our representation on the commission. So again, I will say, I think it should be a standing agenda item. It should have an overview summary from you or we should have, these are likely to be coming up. These are areas of consideration. I just went to the site from Monday's meeting to see any of what you guys are talking about right now. So we don't have in our meeting packet what was voted on. We don't have in our meeting packet, the draft that you sent us last week. So like, these are all process things that can be improved upon and must be. But if the charge is that the chair is representing the board, then the chair should have informed representation. And that has not been our practice. And attachments to minutes do not constitute an engaged discussion on how you represent the board on that commission.
So, and, and not to be flip, Kim, but the, the act designated the chair of the state board of education or designee. So here I am, I am doing my best to keep board members in the loop as things happen. You're right, I did not include the draft report from the commission in today's agenda packet. I, I certainly could have. I, I didn't think about it in that lens and I'm happy to do that going forward. But I'm sitting on that commission in my capacity as chair of the board and, you know, making decisions in live time that fit with what makes sense to me. And you guys voted me your chair. So like, all I can say is I'm following the lines of authority here and I'm making decisions that seem like the right decisions to be made under the circumstances. We've not had any substantive conversations about the future of public education in Vermont. So I, I foresee, and this goes back to my earlier comment, that we've really been standing up the structure of the commission for the past few months. We had to get this report out by December 15th. I will be the first to acknowledge that that report, we were requested to submit recommendations. We did not submit recommendations because we didn't have time to analyze the data to be able to provide recommendations. And what became clear to us was that there was no quick fix here. If there had been a quick fix, then we could have provided recommendations, but there was no quick fix. And so the way Chair Roy framed the report instead was a call to action to basically say, listen, everybody, we are collecting data, we are going to have some hard decisions and conversations, but this is going to require collective action from every Vermonter to be informed and educated and to make hard decisions. So we're kind of at the brink of that, but we actually haven't even started having those conversations. And I think once we start, you know, getting the data, I would love to have more extended time during our meetings to talk about the work of the commission, the data, the questions that are on the table so that I can then take, you know, that feedback to the meetings. But we haven't had those substantive conversations yet. And so what I've been doing at every board meeting that we've had since July is providing an update as to what the commission has done. And again, it's largely been standing up the framework. And then turning to Zoe, because she's also on the ed finance subcommittee to talk about, you know, what the ed finance subcommittee has been doing. And up until now, I would say the bulk of the work that's been done has been done by the ed finance subcommittee. I, I'm not sure that that is going to continue to be the case. But I hope that explains sort of the structure and the approach that I've had thus far. So I'm, I'm struggling or, you know, struggling to meet, you know, the deadlines by the commission as well as the, the timing and cadence of the board. And, you know, making my best judgment to how to marry those two things. I don't think that I have made any decisions that are contrary to the board. So I can understand that Tammy has just articulated a couple of reasons why she would not have voted for the report. That data that, you know, those two new pages that were modified on Sunday night was information that Zoe pulled out based on reports that had previously been linked. So that was not new information, it was new to the report. Let me go to Tammy and then Gray.
I'll let Gray go next and then I'll go next.
Thank you. I understand the confusion here because I remember at, I believe it was our August, either the board meeting or the board retreat, it was specifically asked, you know, the nature of the representative position, because I think there's some disagreement about that, which I understand because in, in general, in the world, there's disagreement on what it means to represent something. And I remember thinking after that question was asked, that that question was not in any way really answered. So I was confused about that because I mean, in, in your capacity as a representative on the commission, you're either A, a representative in the sense that you will always try your best to represent the majority opinion of the state board and also do your best to always find out what that majority opinion is. Or B, that you serve as a delegate with the consent of the board to make your best individual judgment call on whatever comes up. And I think those are both, you know, reasonable answers to what it means to be a representative. It sounds a little bit like you're saying you're the latter, except you know, I, I just, I kind of wanted a definitive answer there. Are you actively always going to try to get the board's, you know, majority opinion on things? Or are you acting as an independent representative?
No, so I, I was named as a delegate to the commission in my capacity as the chair. So in, in my serving on the state board of education informs the, you know, expertise that I bring to the commission. I will do my best and have been doing my best to keep board members apprised of what's going on and to have conversations and solicit feedback so that I can, you know, take, because, you know, I'm just one person, right? I'm, I'm one person of an 11-member board. But I, I don't think my serving on the commission is constrained by a majority vote of the board. You guys voted me chair and I'm doing my best to, you know, have these conversations with you at the cadence of our meetings and then having the authority to work in live time to make the best decision that I can based on, you know, my expertise, what I bring to the position and, you know, my background.
So theoretically, you would be fine making a decision, even if it was not necessarily what you thought the majority of the board wanted, which is, which is fine. I understand that sounds like a loaded question. I just want to understand the the nature of the representative position.
If there were an opportunity, I mean, let, let's, let's come up with a hypothetical here. So let's say that we were having the conversation that we're having right now a week ago. And let's say that the board had had the benefit of, you know, the updated report that was submitted on Sunday night. And the timing of it worked and the board had a meeting and we were talking about the report. And board members, some people, you know, thought the report was fine, some people had questions. You know, what I would do is go to the commission meeting and say, hey, the board had a conversation about this. We voted by a vote of X to Y in favor of the report. The concerns that I heard from board members as to why they weren't voting for it were, you know, A, B, C, and D. So I'm communicating, you know, what the board has communicated to me. And I, Jennifer Samuelson, sitting on the commission, am voting this way.
Okay, thank you.
Tammy?
I want to shift though to something Zoe said, which is around the data. And Zoe, I, I know that you, you knew the agency and there are lots of concerns with the data at the agency for lots of different reasons. And dealing with data is always messy and all of those things. But I, I do have a number of comments on the materials that are included in this report now. And, you know, I know you had links to these, but those were agency documents before. That's different, right? Now this is text of, as a report that is being put forward by the commission that has state board representative on it. And again, I, I still think that when Jennifer votes, she's voting on behalf of the board. So I can provide you that comment as an individual citizen and if that's helpful to you. That said, I, I will go back to, you know, I sit in this funny seat, right? As an expert in many of these things where I'm seeing substantial, I have substantial questions around some of the data, some of how the things are being calculated, some of the conclusions. And there are conclusions in this report. This is not just descriptive. This is the state of the field. There's interpretation on some of these, on some of these numbers in the commission's report. And so I, I don't know how to, I don't know how to work with you or within this structure very well. So, you know, I hear from Jennifer, I should be a public citizen and just comment to the agency independently, which I can do, but now it's in a commission report that the state board has signed off on. So I can give you a list of those questions. We can talk through them now in public. Like, how do you want to handle this, Zoe?
Yeah, so I think we've been really clear as an agency. This has been an incredibly transparent process. We, and I'll give this update in my report, the level of stakeholders that we've engaged, the number of opportunities we've had for people to provide input. And you can see that we're really listening and responding to that feedback. I have opened the opportunity for the board to spend a little bit more time with the data that we are reporting. We have not been able to focus on that because of other agenda items that the board has prioritized. So I think that would be great to have an expanded focus on the agency's work around the listen and learn tour, on the data that we're reporting. That is a lot of what the commission is referencing as they're moving forward with their work. And then I think there's opportunities, certainly as a private citizen, everybody was invited to participate in our listen and learn and be engaged in that way. And certainly we can have one-on-one conversations and make sure that we can provide you answers. And also, you know, as we go through this process, there's additional analysis that will be required. And that has been really clear. We've been really upfront about that throughout the entire process. Regarding how things are calculated, we've been really transparent. And we heard a need to provide greater clarity and transparency around that. In the re-released state education profile report, we have included what we're calling recipe cards. And that goes into a very detailed view around how to recreate each analysis. We've also created, made available an open source data set. And that is our practice, always moving forward with all the reports that we're producing. We are including recipe cards, we are including open source data sets so that there is full transparency. And as you know, there have been, the entire board knows, there have been longstanding data issues that we've had at the agency of education. And we are really committed And we are really committed, um, to correcting those and addressing them. Um, and this data should be used to engage in ongoing planning. It should raise different questions. Um, and those should be fully explored and we're very committed to doing that. So my succinct answer to your question is, one, there are a lot of opportunities, um, to provide input. I think, one, we could have a full conversation with the board and I'd be happy to meet one-on-one, uh, with you and other members of the board, uh, just to kind of share with you where we are, what we're seeing and where we're headed as an agency. Um, and it's really exciting, um, time.
Yeah, I, I think there's a, I think the challenge here, one of the challenges we're having in this moment is we have a report that was voted on, right, that seems to have state board approval now. And we have members of the board who disagree or have some concerns with things that are in there. So I'm really not sure how it is, how it is now that we as individual board members provide feedback to that process. Right? Because the, we don't have, we don't have an avenue to do that anymore. And I can sit here in public and they can get on the public record. But I do think that there needs to be some way for us to have, right, to be able to sort of share that feedback in a public way as a board, not as individuals. And I think the, the full board should hear all of that too, right? It shouldn't just be like Zoe and Tammy over coffee talking about data, although I'll do that any day because it's fun.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that too.
But do you understand my point? Like, we have, we've got a process challenge here.
Yeah, and I want to call it, so one, just as a reminder, I am not a voting member of the State Board of Education. And, um, many, over the last several months, my secretary's report, I haven't been able to provide that. And the Listen and Learn is really critical to the work that we're doing at the agency to drive our strategic plan and to inform the commission. So I welcome, um, and have offered more time and oper, and more time with the board uh, to give updates in these areas and we just have not been able to do that. So, um, I do think it's really critical. I, I believe that I am, I've been very transparent and open around this. Some of it comes down to how we're going to prioritize time and the agenda on the state board. But, you know, all this information that, that we've presented as an agency, um, has been broadly distributed. Um, I'm, I'm understanding your point. Um, but, you know, from, from our perspective as an agency, there wasn't anything new, um, that we were presenting in the report. And it was up to the commission to vote on what level of specificity they wanted to call out, um, in the report. But it wasn't new information and I think that's important to clarify. And I want to make sure that it's, um, that the board is very aware that I'm interested in having that conversation. I think it would be helpful. Um, and I do think it's really critical, um, to planning for the future of education in Vermont.
So let me turn to Tom, Lyle and Rich. And let me also just acknowledge, um, I know that, um, Rivendell is here, representatives, um, from Rivendell are here. So I want to be cognizant of our time because we're over time. We might have to shift our agenda around a little bit. So let me go to Lyle and then Rich.
So, so, so that was my, that was my comment. And we're, we're about an hour over time. I know we have people. Um, I know Jen is waiting in the wings. Um, and so that was my comment that, um, to, to Zoe's point, what usually gets cut feels like the deferred maintenance of the board agenda, but the, um, the, her, her report, um, often gets, um, gets cut or, um, we don't get a full discussion of it. I, I just want to point that out that we probably need to, um, change our agenda.
Okay, thanks. Lyle? Oh, you're muted.
I concur. Um, I want to say I, I think we need to move on. And I want to point out that I have had questions about the report. I have reached out to Jennifer. She has responded to my questions. Um, it sounds like we have two items we want to have on our next agenda and maybe have it be the agenda, which is, um, Secretary Saunders and the Listen and Learn Tour and the Commission and the Future of Public Education. And maybe we need to just work on those two things, but I think we need to move on to folks who are waiting for us.
Thank you. Rich, and then Kim, I'll give you the last word.
So my comments were really quickly is, um, I think there's a little difference in this committee. This was not like we voted to make whoever are representative to the committee. This was, um, set by, by the legislature, who was going to be on the committee. I, so I think it's a little different position than, um, saying to Jennifer that you're representing the state board. You were appointed for your position as the chairman of the state board. And I think sometimes as chairman of a board, you do have, you have to make some decisions. Um, so I have no problem with, with you voting or, or voting on that. Um, and then kind of where everybody else was going, I'd like to see a special meeting on this because it is really, there's a lot of information. And if we just have this as a topic to, to kind of go over, uh, I think Listen and Learn, the update on this, I, I think it would be worthwhile. And maybe we can do a, a special meeting. I know everybody loves meetings so much. But I think, again, if this is our focus and it doesn't get, um, put off, because we were off the time in the beginning, just having a discussion on changing the agenda went almost 15 minutes. So I will shut up now.
We are a chatty board. Um, thanks, Rich. Kim?
Yeah, I think some of that is around agenda planning. I think I want to ask one follow-up question to Gray and just acknowledge it's the chair of this, in the statute says, chair of the state board or designee. So I don't know if we took an active vote to designate Jennifer. I don't recall that. Or if we might consider a vote to ensure that we are having representation with the expertise related to the topic at hand. Um, so that is one thing. And then Jennifer, I just need to clarify what I thought I understood from Gray's question. And that I think I am understanding that you are viewing your role as you sit there to be able to vote as you see appropriate. And that you would not, it would not be inconsistent for you in your understanding of that role to have heard the consensus of the board and to vote differently. I thought that I heard you say that.
I mean, this is all conjecture, right? And, and let me just point out, I mean, Kim, I've been the-
I think it's important to clarify that though, because I think our expectations should be-
Yeah, and I think that's a fair question. So let me just set the table here. I've been the chair for a little bit more than two years. Um, you guys all know my leadership style. I am by no means a dictator. I, I'm very consensus oriented. Um, I would use the report that we just went through as a board as example A, where, you know, I put something out, we have a conversation about it. I change my mind, you guys change your mind. We have a discussion. I mean, like, we had emails about my report and I kind of explained to you my thinking. And I think some of those things made sense to you. Other things you brought up again today, we changed things. You know, I've changed things based on what you said, what Tom said, so on. So I am preserving the right to have a conversation with the board and to change my mind. Because I do, I try to be very open-minded about these things. So my point is, if it's a six to three vote on something, I can't represent everyone. All I can do is to acknowledge that there was a difference of opinion. Some board members voted one way, other board members voted a different way. And I can explain the reasonings that I heard for, you know, why people voted differently. And then at the end of the day, I'm going to have to vote. And so I will do my- you know, based on conversations that we have.
Yeah, so I guess that is a very clear answer and a concern. Um, I just recall in having served as a chair of boards, that every, the only authority I had was to speak for what the majority vote was of the body I was representing for whatever purpose. And that is true if you're a sitting board member, you can explain why your vote might have been different from the majority. But the position of the board is the vote of the majority. And so as you are describing that, I think this board should consider, perhaps at a future meeting, given the timing, whether or not that your interpretation of your representation as delegate to that commission is consistent with our expectations when the board should be having fulsome conversation around this and providing guidance. And that we expect that that guidance is reflective of a majority position, not an explanation why the majority said one thing, the minority said this, and you choose to vote in the minority or whatever the situation may be. So that, I just, I'll leave that. And I don't have anything else to say about that, except that your interpretation is vastly different than my understanding of my role and responsibilities and what I would expect of chair representation in any role.
But I guess the, the caveat here is that there are going to be times, given the reality of when this board meets, and we're not having emergency meetings on 24 hours' notice, you know, that gets warned on a Sunday night before I have a meeting at 8:30 Monday morning. I think that's unrealistic. So at a certain point, I am going to have to be able to do my best with, you know, understanding the position of the board, you know, sort of in a global sense. And, you know, the work that I've been doing on the committee to read all of the materials, to attend the meetings, to be present. You know, at a certain point, I am delegated this responsibility and I'm taking it very, very seriously. And so I understand that board members might not agree with a particular decision. But my point is, I'm reading the materials. I am representing the board. I have been given this responsibility. And at a certain point, I am going to have to be able to vote on things that have not been discussed with the full board, just given the way these things work. So I wouldn't want the answer to be that the chair can only vote on things that the, the state board of ed has discussed and voted on. Because I think that basically, you know, whittles my participation on the commission to be, you know, ineffective.
Yeah, I hope the commission will have thoughtful agendas planned as well, such that our thoughtful agendas would reflect opportunity for fulsome discussion, not links to minutes as sufficing for engagement on the role of the state board in representation on the commission. And we don't, I don't, we don't need to have a defensive back and forth. This is what my expectation would be. I don't feel as though we've had engaged discussion for the entire fall. We have had links to minutes. And so if you are interested in representing the position of the board or if this board would wish to take a vote regarding our delegate, we could do any of those things, but I think we should consider this as a process problem. And if the commission is meeting monthly, we ensure that the timing on our meetings is, it, understanding what is expected to come on the agenda, being able to provide you feedback because we've had a conversation on where things are and what we can offer you as sort of the reflection of this full board. And to hear the notion, I, I guess, I think this board should clarify our expectations if it's a matter on which we have taken a vote, because you interpret that very differently than I would as a delegate or representation of any board as chair or otherwise. And so I, I don't need us to talk about it anymore. I just would like it to be a thoughtful agenda conversation at a future meeting.
Yeah, and let me just reiterate, um, that the past meetings in the fall have been more than me just submitting committee meeting, committee meeting minutes. I've presented that to sort of pique board members' curiosity and anyone who's interested can go listen to the recordings. We've had opportunities for conversations and up until today, there hasn't been a whole lot of conversation about this. So I think moving forward, we will have more conversations. But I, I don't want your takeaway to be that I cannot try to engage the board. I have. So I appreciate the conversation on all of this. So I will follow up with Mike and Roy. I will get back to the board. Um, and at this point, um, I'm going to skip ahead, if it's okay with Secretary Saunders, to the Interstate Compact and circle back. Let me say again, I mentioned this at the beginning of the meeting, I have a hard stop at 12:30. So we may have to shift the agenda around a little bit and I may have to leave early and pass the gavel to Tammy. So, um, at this point, I think we've got everyone from Rivendell here. Um, and just to provide some background on it, there are proposed changes to the Articles of Agreement of the Rivendell Interstate School District. Rivendell is one of the first interstate, um, school districts in the country. And they were created in 1998. Um, it includes the towns of Fairleigh, Vershire, and West Fairleigh in Vermont, and Orford in New Hampshire. Um, the district operates two pre-K to five elementary schools and a grade six to 12, um, school. So you have in your agenda packet, the original Articles of Agreement that go through the process of how amendments are made. And one of those steps in the process is to come before the board. So that's where we are today. Um, and at this point, I will turn it over to interim superintendent, um, Jennifer Bosett-Jorans. I hope I've said that correctly, um, and welcome you to the board.
Thank you, Jennifer. I appreciate you taking the time to hear us. My name is Jen Botso-Jorans and I serve as interim superintendent here. Prior to that, I was at Kingdom East in Mount Mansfield and I did Articles of Agreement in their Act 46 process, so I'm very familiar with this. We are process outlined to approve a change in our articles is that that needs to be brought to the board. The board agrees to it. They have a hearing with the public. And then it goes to the State Boards of Ed, respectively Vermont and New Hampshire. And then once that's approved, it goes back to the voters on our annual meeting, which is Saturday, March 15th this year. And then it needs to be approved by a two-thirds majority, not a, a simple majority. So I am here in part of that process. Let me see, I have a whole bunch of things. There are actually only four interstate school districts in the country. Us and then Dresden, which is Hanover-Norwich. And then there is one in Arizona and Utah on the border. And then there's also one in Indiana and Ohio, and they actually take an act of Congress to happen. And one of the great things is you get the opportunities in two states. One of the challenges is which state are you in? And you're straddling both states. So there's a lot of interesting dynamics there. So you received a bunch of documents and I'm just going to walk through, if, if it's okay, the appendices and what's written in there. And basically, we, um, the articles right now say that to vote for the elective officials, the board members, the clerk, the moderator, there's a paper ballot. And that paper ballot is handed to you when you walk into the annual meeting, a half hour before the annual meeting and a half hour after. So all on one day, people come in, they get the paper ballot and they vote for the, the elected officials. And then they sit on the floor of the gym in the Rivendell High School here. And they debate the budget and then they vote on the budget. Our participation levels before the pandemic, a little less than 200. Uh, last year, there are 250. This spring, our first vote, there were just shy of 400 and the vote was voted down. And then we had a second vote, which, uh, passed. And the electorate said at that meeting, as they have in the past, we really want to go to Australian ballot. So these, this amendment to the articles walks through each of those pieces. One is that the vote is in each town. It's a week after the annual meeting. Uh, the appendix number two is just the timelines for the warrants. And we had to change all this language because in the articles, it talks about the voting of the elected officials as opposed to an official ballot for the vote. And the language is a little different, which is why all these are listed. And then it goes through the assistance, the procedurally how it works, who the moderator reports to, the timelines. Article, the appendix number 23 is the hours that polls are open, which aligns with Vermont open meeting law, polls, polling for voting. Number 33 is about absentee ballots, multiple towns. They would take absentee ballots and then bring them to be commingled on the day they were counted. 44 is the transportation of ballots, which you see often in union districts or, or unified districts where all the towns vote, they come together and they, they commingle them. And, um, 53 is making the language the same as the election of the officers. 54 is a formatting. 55 is simply wording. 56 states commingled and then 57 and 58 reflect back in all the other processes. And it allows both the board and the moderator to make, um, procedures to make sure this flows smoothly. So what I'm looking for is questions, any questions? You can ask me whatever you want. And also we would entertain a motion and the hope is that you would approve this or not. So. That was a long ramble. You can ask me whatever you want.
You're awesome, Jen. Thank you.
Jennifer, you're on mute.
Yeah, I realized I was muted. Thank you. Um, that was a really good overview. Um, thank you, Jen. So I did have a few questions. Um, some of these are just kind of housekeeping issues, but I'm looking at the Articles of Agreement on pages three and four and just want to ensure for the board's, um, knowledge that everything was procedurally done correctly. So under J, Amendments to Articles of Agreement, there was a written application of at least 10% of the voters that was presented to the school board. Is that correct?
Oh, it says that or one of its members. So you can do one or the other. So it, it wasn't a written application. It was the board deciding to do it.
Okay, I thought I'd seen that it was a written application, but okay. And that happened 120 days before the date of the annual district meeting?
It did, yes.
Perfect. Um, was there a public hearing?
Yes, we had a public hearing within this prescribed timeline and the public hearing went well. We got some feedback and we recessed the public hearing. And then we came back and reconvened it a week later, still with- still within the timeframe of the days required before the annual meeting of March 15th.
Okay. And then there are a couple of discrepancies between the public hearing and the proposed amendment. In paragraph 23, it says that the polls are open from 10 to 7, but in the public hearing, it says 9:30 to 7?
So you're looking at the warning for the public hearing document?
Yeah.
And then I'm so. So my understanding, I believe Sean Tuohy from Lynn Lennon Blackman and Tuohy is here to help. He's our legal counsel. But procedurally, my understanding is that when you have the hearing, because it's not the official warning to be voted on, the whole purpose of the hearing to the public is to get input. And so that's why we recessed the hearing. And then we reconvened it a week later and made the change from the original warning for the hearing, not for the actual warrant article that will go on the ballot for folks to vote on.
Okay, so ultimately, is it going to be 9:30 to 7 or 10 to 7?
I'm just. 10 to 7.
Okay. And then also in paragraph 57, the hearing mentions two registered voters with request to a recount, whereas what you submitted to the board just has one representative.
So that is the same explanation as the one that I just gave. Is that when we had, what happened is all the town clerks gave feedback at that initial hearing that was recessed, and then the change was made.
Okay, so what the board has, the December 18th memo, is the updated information that will then go in the morning?
Exactly.
All right. And then, just curious why the other paragraphs that were amended were not included in the public hearing?
So in the first public hearing, the, the plan was to have the voting for the budget to be on the same day as the annual meeting, which would be a Saturday. So currently, what happens is people vote for the clerk and the board members on either side of that annual meeting. And so what happened was the original warning said, well, let's do that. Well, let's make it from 9:30 until 7 at night. And the feedback we got from the clerks in that hearing was, on a Saturday, we are not going to be able to get poll workers. And it's going to be an entire challenge to be able to staff that solution. So the recommendation was that that vote for the budget and for the elected officials would be within days after that meeting and on the full time, 10 to 7. And what they've talked about is the annual meeting would be Saturday, and then it would be the following Tuesday. But that specificity is not set. So in, in the, when that was changed, from it being Saturday, the same day as the annual meeting buffered on either side, to another day, we had to go back and make further changes to those other articles that address the time and the day and the absentee ballots and so forth.
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. And so ultimately, what the voters are going to vote on are all of the amendments that are, again, are listed in the December 18th memo that you submitted to the board?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. Other questions? Tammy?
Just want to thank Jen and her team for their leadership on this. You really appreciate it. I know this is a lot of extra work, but it's really important to your community. So thank you for doing it.
Other questions? All right. Hearing none. Do we have a motion?
Kim has her hand raised.
I'm sorry, Jen, it wasn't really a question, but it was also similarly an appreciation. I was in Essex for years, and that was Australian ballot. I'm in Grand Isle County now, and that is Australian ballot. And the opportunity to be able to engage with and register your vote in an Australian ballot environment, not, notwithstanding the, you know, annual meeting that happens in the time ahead of that vote, I think is a greater representation of the act of democracy and how people can voice their opinions and votes. So thank you for taking this body of work forward.
All right. If there are no further questions, and I don't see motion language, so I'm going to go on the fly here. I will entertain a motion that the board approve the amendments to the Rivendell Interstate School District's proposed changes to the Articles of Agreement as articulated in the school district's memo to the board dated December 18th, 2024.
So moved.
All right, thank you. Is there a second? Second by ten. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Okay, so your next stop is the New Hampshire State Board of Education? All right, well, good luck with everything. Thank you for being so organized. It's a pleasure having you here today.
Well, thank you, and thank you all for your work. I appreciate the conversation beforehand. This stuff is hard stuff. And have a good holiday, whatever that means to you.
Thank you, you too. Okay, so I realize that we didn't take a break. I'm happy to skip it unless board members feel that they need five minutes. Okay, we'll skip it. Secretary Saunders, let me turn to you for your report. Unless you feel like you want to rearrange things, because I know we've got some agency people ready to present as well.
I can provide just a high-level overview. And then I think we've discussed maybe having more time at the future meeting to dive deeper into the broader work we're doing as an agency with a Listen and Learn Tour. So I would just provide some high-level overview. So we did just last week wrap up our Listen and Learn Tour. And we have learned so much throughout the process. We're compiling those qualitative themes, and we'll be reporting them in January. I just want to highlight the scope of that work. In phase two of this, we engaged with our education leaders. We hosted six sessions across Vermont and engaged with 250 education leaders. That included superintendents and principals and business managers, curriculum directors, school board members and others. Then we went into our public engagement and educator sessions. We had a total of, we had a total of 12 public engagement sessions and also 12 educator sessions. And we realized that we were not getting as much student participation in the public engagement. So we partnered with our principals associations and Up for Learning to host separate student focus groups and hosted those at seven locations. So in total, when we talked with education leaders, it's been about 250 people in that work. When we talked with our educators and the general public, we're tallying of that number. But it's definitely in the hundreds that were involved. And then when we look at the students, about 152 middle and high school students. And I'll just highlight that we've been really all across the state doing this work. We've visited Woodstock, Bennington, Rattleboro, Stowe, Montpelier, West Rutland, Lyndonville, Ennisburg, Burlington, Heinsberg, Brandon, Moretown, Colchester, Hyde Park, Townsend, St. Johnsbury, Springfield. We'll get a full list to make sure that I've accounted for all the places that we've been. But it really has been both inspiring and motivating to have Vermonters engaged in this process with our agency staff. And we are really taking the feedback to heart. We've been working as an agency on a monthly basis to engage with our strategic planning and really looking to align our work in the short term with the educational priorities and needs of communities across Vermont, while we're also being very active on a number of legislative bodies that are looking for our future policy considerations and thinking through how we as an agency can best position ourselves to support that work. What I would like to do in the next month, when we come back to do a Listen and Learn with the State Board, is to walk through the questions that we've asked the community. And we'll be at that time able to share some additional detail around the themes that we've heard and to solicit your input as well. Something we've been really clear about with the agency is that our engagement process never ends, right? While we are concluding and had to wrap up the Listen and Learn as it's structured now, we are very committed to embedding new practices and new ways for us to continue to have that feedback loop with the field to best align our work. So I will share and then email some of the questions that you can be prepared to think about in preparation for our next meeting. For those of you who have participated in our Listen and Learn Tour, you'll know what to expect. But we really organize the focus group in three sections. We first ask questions related to how we're defining student success. And then we have a series of questions focused on the student supports. And in that area, it's really what are the conditions that are needed, both in school and community to help students thrive? And then we'll look at the impacts of Vermont's funding system. So I'll share with you in advance of the meeting the specific questions, so you have an opportunity to reflect on those before we meet. We also, since our last meeting at the State Board, we re-released the State Education Profile Report. I touched on that a little bit earlier in the meeting. That also includes a description of how people can recreate the analysis and an open source data set that is going to be common practice for us as an agency to make sure that we have full transparency. And we also have a validation process with the field before our publication of that data to ensure that it is accurate. We, through this process, have identified that there have been some data inconsistencies in coding across districts. And that's something we're really working with the field on and providing some additional guidance as we move forward. The December 1st letter was released. And in that, I'm sure many of you have seen, we're looking at a 5.9% average property tax bill increase. This calculation is based on input that the agency collects from the field and is a collaborative effort with the Tax Department and JFO as well. We launched our School and District Budget Training Series this month. In total, we've had seven trainings. This is provided in partnership with New Solutions K-12. The themes of these sessions are focused on staffing best practices as we look at staffing best practices for elementary school teachers, elementary school specials teachers, special education teachers, instructional coaches. And then there are sessions related to tips and strategies for budget development along with budget communication. The themes for these sessions were prioritized with input from our Vermont School Boards Association, Vermont Superintendent's Association, and VASBO as well. So they were actively involved in helping us to refine that. One of the things that we note is, you know, our schools and districts are in the throes of budgeting right now. And so timing is a little challenging. But this, this series will be something for our districts and our district leaders to point to as a reference and a best practice from national experts to support some of the tough budgeting decisions that are underway now. These are also being recorded and are available on our website. This month, I participated in the University of Vermont Grand Rounds with Dr. Heidi Schumacher to talk about chronic absenteeism and the role of the pediatric community and supporting academic recovery. It was a really wonderful opportunity to think concretely in the ways that the education and the health sector can partner and collaborate. And was really encouraged by the level of engagement and participation. And we're really fortunate to work with Dr. Schumacher and others at UVM Pediatric Department. We're really committed to this work. And so that's really exciting. I can share our presentation from that. The agency, as I noted earlier today, we're really focused on providing additional and expanded professional development and training in the field. So just in this past month, we had a number of trainings we provided around social studies and math inclusion in addition to the budget series that we shared. We've already touched on the Commission's report. There are a number of other legislative reports that have been submitted or will be at the end of this month that I wanted to give the board visibility to. The first is the Pre-Kindergarten Education Implementation Committee submitted their report. The summary of that is that the committee recommended maintaining the 10-hour-per-week benefit for three-year-olds and four-year-olds in pre-kindergarten and expanding hours in service for four-year-olds. The commission did recognize that they did not have ample time or opportunity to really evaluate the data and the financial impact. And so while this was a recommendation and an intent to expand, indicated that further analysis would be needed around the implementation considerations and the financial impact. They've also noted the importance of putting this work in the context of broader changes that are being contemplated through the Commission on the Future of Public Education. The School Construction Aid Working Group also wrapped up their committees and submitted a report. We will be shortly submitting a report for Act 78 After-School Advisory. We actually will be presenting to the After-School Advisory this week with an idea for adding a new program track to fully capitalize on some additional dollars available that were not expected, but much appreciated, given the need to expand for universal after-school. And we will also be submitting a Community Schools report this month as well. So I know that was a very high-level overview. You'll hear today from our team that's leading Reed Vermont. That is one of our signature initiatives that we have launched early in our strategic planning process. And we have a lot of momentum around that work. You'll also hear an overview of the State of Special Education Delivery in Vermont from our team. And you'll expect to see a report on special education in the new year as well. And that report will include a broad understanding of the law for IDEA along with recent legislative changes in Vermont and some best practices around special education delivery as we go into these broader policy conversations around our education system. So it has been a busy month since we last met. I know that's a high-level overview and would look for, you know, before we transition to our reports, you know, any input on what you would like me to expand upon at next month's meeting? Because there's a lot with each of these items. There's a robust set of information and background that would be important to bring in to the discussion. So would welcome your input on how, what you would like me to focus and emphasize as we dive into this work next month.
Thank you, Zoe. That was really helpful. Kim, I see you have your hand raised.
I just want to say thank you for the speed-dating version. I'm wondering, it looks as though you were working from notes. And I think we might have asked this before. But it doesn't need to be formal report as much as if the secretary's report has notes to inform it or links to other resources, like the committees you're convening or whatever, where there's public information. We could dive a little more deeply. I was typing furiously to try and keep up with all that I know you all have been doing. And a written report, either in advance of the meeting or notes that you are working from in presentation that can then be attached to our minutes would be really valuable. And it would help to highlight all the work and let us go deeper when we want to in the vein of clicking onto more if we wished.
Certainly. And I send out a weekly email to our staff with all of these updates, because there's just so much happening every week. I mean, it really is tremendous to see the movement and the progress that the agency is making in a lot of different areas. So I'm happy to share that. And that's something I can do as a follow-up to this meeting as well.
Perfect, thank you. And you could even, like, on the monthly ones, just attach the weekly ones you show as staff. That's an awesome thing without you doing more, having to do more. Thank you.
Thanks. Jenna?
I was just also going to thank Zoe and echo what Kim said. And I think getting the memos would be great, because I think at times I'll read more articles in the digger to prepare myself for this than having content from, released directly from Zoe. And I think my brain just works better if I could read it ahead of time and have better questions to ask or more impactful feedback. So I appreciate all the work you do and want to be part of the dialogue. Thanks.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Tammy.
Zoe, I'm hearing from the field that districts are seeing some pretty wild swings in their long-term weighted average daily membership calculations that are, they're having a hard time getting their head around and understanding why things are so different. Do you have a sense of what, why that might be?
Yeah, we've actually, we've been fielding a number of questions from business managers and superintendents and principals. So just this, was it this week, last week? We hosted a webinar in partnership, so it was the Agency of Education and the Tax Department, to walk through the questions around the long-term weighted ADM. We also had subject matter experts to explain the poverty indicator. And tax explained the updates and changes with the CLA. So we provided that webinar. That will also be available and recorded on our website. We are submitting an additional memo, either today or tomorrow, that walks through some of the other questions that folks had around that. Again, there's another question related to the excess spending threshold, which was reinstated this cycle per the General Assembly. And there's been a lot of questions around that because that has not been active for a couple of years. So all of those things, we're being very responsive to. And I'll make sure that you, as a board, have access to the resources and the guidance that we're providing to the field in those areas.
Is there going to be an update going, an updated count going out to districts? Or are we sure that the file that we're working, that all the districts are working with is, is set to go? I know in the past, I mean, this is, sometimes there was an update that needs to come out because there, it's a very difficult thing to calculate, right? And we catch things after the file went out. Is there any anticipation that that might be happening this year?
Yeah. So one of the things I think this is reinforcing is that our timeline is really challenging. And we talked about that with our education funding report. The way that we do budgeting is very unusual and unique from other states. And we start earlier and we end earlier. And the challenge with that is that we don't, districts often don't have the input that they need to make the strategic budgeting decisions that they would like. So I think all of these questions do reinforce the importance for us as a state to really consider some of those updates and changes to how we fund schools and budget. Because this does, just because of the timing, there are certain inputs that are not as finalized as we would like for them to inform planning. So part of, and I'm trying to pull up our communication, but what we were sharing was, you know, this is what it's based on now and a preview of what we would expect in terms of any additional updates. And we did give that to the field in terms of the timeline of when we might expect an update. So I'm just trying to pull that up.
Thanks. I know it's, it's a hard thing. And you are right, right? Like Vermont's budgeting cycle and our, and our, actually, our fiscal planning cycle generally is, is out of step with what's done in most states. And it does create challenges for our local school boards.
Right. Yeah, just pulling that up.
You could just shoot an email. I know we're tight on time.
But yes, we know that.
A number of people have contacted me about it, so I just wanted to quickly ask the question. It sounds like there may be an update coming out.
Yeah. Well, yes, absolutely. And I appreciate that. I think that is part of the role of the Board, is being able to flag some of these questions to make sure that the agency has visibility on this topic. We absolutely do. You know, as I said, we have, we submitted a very thorough report to the superintendents two weeks ago. I also met with the VSA trustees. Our team presented to VASBO as well, got input. And then we had the webinar. We got input on the webinar from VASBO around any outstanding questions. We are fielding one-on-one questions as well for those districts that have really unique and specific details around how to communicate with their board or adjust their budgets. And then we are submitting another formal communication. So I just, I don't want to give you the wrong date, but we have laid that out. And I will make sure that Board has that visibility.
No, I think it's just important that, I think the important information is that the numbers that are out there right now are preliminary and that, you know, this is a dynamic process that is part of our, our broader systemic challenges, right? With, with sort of our fiscal apps. So there'll be updates, there'll be updates, it sounds like, forthcoming from the agency.
We're continuing. And I think the last three weeks, we've provided an update around this and we'll continue to do it to make sure that we are responsive and overcommunicating. I think it's pointing to some broader systemic issues, right? That are outside of the control of districts and outside the control of the agency and getting more specific, right?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thanks for clarifying.
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Zoe. I think what I'd like to do, if it's okay with everyone and an abundance of caution, is pick up future meeting planning now and then go back to Read Vermont and State of the State and Special Ed. Is that okay? I don't want to hold up the agency people. But I don't think this will be a long item on the agenda. I'm not hearing any disagreement. Okay, so future meeting planning, what I have on my list is Portrait of an Adult Learner. This has been on the agenda for the last few months. It's been sort of pushed forward. Zoe had recommended that the timing of it would work better for January. So I have got that on my list. Commission update. And to that end, I forgot to mention this when we were talking about it before. The next commission meeting is on January the 6th from 1 to 4. The meeting will be virtual. And I believe the agenda will include a presentation on the foundation formula by the agency, findings from the agency's Listen and Learn Tour, and then revisiting charges to subcommittees. At our next board meeting, we will continue on. We will have some committee updates. And I imagine that the commission update and the Listen and Learn will both be extended sessions. Anything else? Okay, not hearing anything. Jenna? You're muted.
I'm sorry. I, sorry. I missed the first date that you said for Zoe's meeting.
For the, well, the next commission meeting is January 6th from 1 to 4, and it's a virtual meeting.
Okay. I just wonder if that would be, if we could get a link for that? I mean, I think it might be advantageous if board members could attend at this point and then have that information as well before we meet again. That would be helpful, probably.
Yeah. I mean, the, the meetings are always posted on the commission website. So do you want, like, an invitation from me? Is that what you're asking?
If it's easy to find, I'll find it. I just didn't know.
I always Google Commission on the Future of Public Education in Vermont, and it takes me right there.
I can Google.
Tammy?
Yeah, I think it might be helpful heading into the legislative session that we have a conversation as a board about sort of how we want to manage conversations with the legislature that are independently of the commission and those that might be occurring with, you know, as a part of the commission's work. So perhaps we can add that to the agenda. It'll be timely since the legislature is coming back about that time.
All right. Anything else? Kim?
Yeah, I, I was going to, again, suggest we look at a governance discussion because we seem to not have a clarity or consistency of our understanding of agenda planning and, you know, representation on commissions and, and this notion of a legislative committee to help support the, the things that are really time-sensitive so that, as Chair, the Chair can do their job. And so I would highlight those things as a January priority because the legislature will be coming into session and things will be ramping up, I'm sure. So I would love to see that happen. And.
So I think that's assumed, like, I, I've mentioned earlier that I will follow up with Chair Roy of the Commission and get back to the Board on that. And then if we have a discussion about how to have conversations with the legislature, I think that sort of takes care of the second aspect of what you just said.
I think mine was a specific request that we visit as the Board a consideration to establish a legislative committee and that we are creating some clarity around the norms that we thought we had regarding governance and agenda planning in general because that consumed time on this agenda that we could have been more proactive about on a full, some governance discussion. You guys are going to have at least two new people coming into the new biennium. And I think that it would be beneficial. Jenna and I have had six solid years all the way through. I'm not sure. Like in our tenure, some people were on for even less. They like, had to step off for one reason or another. This conversation, I don't think, was resolved out of the August work. And I just, it cost us time today, for instance, and I think that we would benefit from revisiting that. So if we had three items that were like, you know, governance that included legislative commission update and the, the Listen and Learn overview or whatever, that's three items on an agenda that might be able to be taken up in five hours or whatever.
So I think that tells me, I mean, not that this wasn't going to happen anyway, but I think that the consideration of establishing a legislative committee and setting the agenda, those are issues for the Roles and Responsibilities Committee. So I will send out a doodle poll and see when we can meet.
Are they or aren't they consideration of this full body?
I thought we had parsed that out.
There used to be a legislative committee, right? So it's just not been populated in my tenure, I don't believe. I know there was under Chair Huiling, for sure.
So I think technically, every committee sunsets every two years and has to be reestablished. So.
I think we could have an intentional discussion if we were to even added up the time on today's agenda regarding our lack of clarity around governance to include agenda planning and commission representation and otherwise. Those are all falling under a governance discussion that I think benefits from the full body, having that discussion in an intentional way and then making a decision if there's action to be taken. I don't think there's a lot of time in the next couple of months to debate how we do our work or how our work is represented when there's a time-sensitive nature of our representation as it relates to legislative issues.
Tom, did you have a comment on that?
Just, I'm, I'm wondering if, if it does go to the Roles and Responsibilities Committee, would they, would that committee be able to report their discussion to the full Board by our next meeting?
I'm assuming we can have a meeting scheduled before our next meeting. So let me just say, you know, we had talked about having extended time with the agency on Listen and Learn, extended time for the commission update. If we're also doing extended time on governance, we are looking at a long meeting. So.
Well, if extended time is just an hour for each, Jennifer, that's three hours. And then update on adult learner, I just, again, I think continuing to not resolve.
We don't move quickly.
Yeah, I, I think because we're not necessarily feeling comfortable with the agenda planning or a time allotment for things on which we are really responsible. Or at least for me, that's how it feels. And I feel like we waste more time because of that and could be really more, far more intentional with our time.
And I don't, I don't want to belabor this, but the whole agenda discussion that we had at the beginning of the meeting, Kim, you were the one that raised the Listen and Learn with the Board. So that's how it went on the agenda. Tammy had an objection to it. And Tammy raised, I mean, Tammy asked me about it last week before the agenda was set. And, you know, by statute, we have 48 hours once, you know, 48 hours before a meeting starts. If you haven't changed the agenda then, the first order of business is to move. So that's what we did. We're following process. I think everyone can feel confident that we're following process. And, you know, the fact that we amended the agenda at the meeting today is not indicative of us not, you know, following the process for setting the agenda. It is indicative of the fact that we followed the process. So.
Yeah, I guess I would just say, Jennifer, the fact that we're not breaking the law doesn't mean we're doing good governance. And I think that this Board has been craving that since our conversations in August. And I think that we aren't necessarily feeling as though that is the case. I think Gray's question of not being clear what representation on the commission meant or how we chose delegates or any of that are all broader governance issues. And we can debate them or get defensive about them, but they aren't working right now. And I just wish this Board could take the time to do that. I think that my question was more around commission. I don't really remember being specific to say we need a whole Listen and Learn Tour at our full Board meeting with Zoe. I don't remember that. I think feedback on how that has been going is beneficial. But to do so for 45 minutes or an hour on the meeting with no materials wasn't, didn't look like that was the best use of our time. I, again, I just, we can either be defensive and say that we're reading the letter of the law, but I didn't hear this body feeling comfortable that we are doing our best job of governance. And this isn't just leadership, this is governance and how we manage our time and our responsibilities. And that has been an ongoing conversation since August. And I don't think it's benefiting us not to get some of that resolved.
Okay. So let me suggest, like, I will put all of these things on the agenda, but then I'm going to have to be really careful about keeping us to time, which I've not done in the past. So I will do that. Tammy?
Just quickly, I was going to say, I think, I do think that we could, can and should talk in the Roles and Responsibilities Committee about what the standing committees are, you know, right? But we should create that as part of our standard operating procedure that we write up and we put up on our SharePoint, and we have that going forward. The fact that committees sunset every two years, that's new news to me, and that's interesting. So that really, I think, even calls, that's even stronger call to action that we need to do that so that we're keeping a running written record of what committees we have and don't have. So I would be in favor of tossing this to the Roles and Responsibilities Committee before. And, and I think we can certainly handle and come back with a recommendation to the Board before the next full Board meeting, and that would take up some of the pressure off the full Board meeting, maybe.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Hearing none. I'm going to now take us back to Agenda Item M. This is Read Vermont. And just to give a little bit of background, I pulled this off of the website. Read Vermont came upon, was built on Act 139 of 2024 and aims to ensure that every child can read by third grade while also supporting struggling adolescent readers, preparing Vermont students for college or career. The agency has collaborated closely with education partners, teachers, curriculum leaders, superintendents, and the Vermont Literacy Advisory Council to understand the needs and opportunities for enhancing literacy instruction across the state. This collaboration has shaped the Read Vermont initiative. And with that, Zoe, I will turn it to you.
Great. Thank you. I'm really excited for the team to be able to share updates. We've, I know in previous meetings, I provided an overview of Read Vermont. We are really excited to be engaged deeply in this work of promoting literacy outcomes statewide. And this truly is a partnership with our educators, with our parents, with other partners that we're working with across the state. I also want the State Board of Education to understand that this is truly an inter-agency effort. Every division across the Agency of Education has been involved in developing Read Vermont and also supporting it, being really intentional around every aspect of our agency, being focused on supporting literacy. So we're, we're really excited. I'm really proud of the level of collaboration of the team and the work that they're accomplishing today. Emily Lush and Emily Loita will walk you through an overview of Read Vermont. So they'll provide a little bit of background on how this initiative came to be and then really focus on the accomplishments over the last several months and where we're headed next. So I'm delighted to introduce them. And just as a process check, you know, because I know we're tight on timing with the agenda, the Read Vermont section will take about 20 minutes. And then next item, the State of Special Education, we will need 30 minutes for. So just want to make sure I was setting that expectation as we go into these items to make sure that they can be, you know, approached in a thoughtful, meaningful way. So with that, I will turn it over to Emily Lush and Emily Loita. Thank you for, for leading us through the Read Vermont presentation.
Great. Thank you, Zoe. Great to be here with you all this morning, afternoon, I guess, now technically. As, as Interim Secretary Saunders said, we are planning to provide an overview about Read Vermont, walking through why we launched it, what it is, how we're implementing it, and then spending most of our time really focused on accomplishments and next steps. So I'm here with my colleague, the other Emily L, Emily Loita, who is, who is with us and will introduce herself. But I am the project manager and leading the Read Vermont work here at the agency. I will, I'll turn it over to Emily Loita to walk through why we launched it and the background.
Hi, thank you. I'm Emily Loita, and I'm the English Language Arts and Literacy Specialist at the AOE. And just going to give a quick recap about Read Vermont and why we launched it. Emily, if you want to go ahead and advance to the next slide. Just a reminder about the many drivers and laws that are in place focused on student outcomes and academics. And many of these are specifically focused on literacy. Read Vermont is our umbrella initiative that is combining all of these and focused on improving literacy outcomes. Over the last decade, there's been an increased focus on improving literacy in Vermont. In 2021, the legislature passed Act 28, which resulted in the formation of the Advisory Council on Literacy and also the creation of online asynchronous modules, which Emily Lash will talk more about. The focus of literacy over the past decade has culminated with the passage of Act 139 in 2024 at the end of the last session. This is our most comprehensive literacy legislation to date. It is an act supporting Vermont's young. It is an act supporting Vermont's young readers through evidence based literacy instruction with a particular focus on explicit and systematic instruction for the foundational skills. So this talks about kindergarten through third grade reading assessment and intervention. Literacy professional learning for K three educators and the AOE recommendations to the Vermont Standards Board for Professional Educators in the ROPA, the Advisory Council on Literacy and the Agency of Education's literacy position. Also expanding our early childhood literacy resources with the Department of Libraries and revision to twenty nine oh three to ensure all students learn to read by third grade. This new legislation, Act one thirty nine, represents a big opportunity for Vermont educators and students. And Reed Vermont is the AOE's comprehensive effort to support Vermont education leaders and educators in strengthening our students' literacy skills, ensuring they are set up for lifelong success. So what is Reed Vermont? A critical priority for Reed Vermont is our vision that every child can read by third grade and striving adolescent readers are supported, ensuring all students are ready for college or career. Reed Vermont provides a shared vision and priorities to ensure equity and cohesion and also puts resources behind this vision. This slide gives a little bit more information about Reed Vermont. As a comprehensive statewide initiative dedicated to improving literacy outcomes, Reed Vermont focuses on all students across the curriculum or across the continuum, PK through grade twelve and beyond. As literacy is a shared priority across the state, Reed Vermont addresses common themes from a variety of constituents and direct recommendations from the Advisory Council on Literacy. So these included resources to support the implementation of evidence based literacy instruction and assessment. AOA resources, guidance and accountability measures to guide the shifts in curriculum instruction and assessment in SUs and SDs and high quality professional learning and job embedded coaching to support classroom educators in putting this resource, or this research into practice. Our Reed Vermont initiative is critical to the implementation of Act one thirty nine. And it is designed to improve both local capacity and state capacity. And this includes training, support and accountability. A critical first step was to craft a shared vision for literacy. This serves several purposes. It communicates and defines for the field what we mean by evidence based practices as well as explicit and systematic instruction. It offers a specific definition to sometimes broad terms such as the science of reading that are often used. And it provides us with an internal and external compass for alignment, alignment across Vermont schools and constituents such as EPPs. Our shared version, our vision, sorry, is grounded in convergent evidence. In most cases, more than one study resulted in strong evidence. Delivering high quality reading and writing instruction based on scientific evidence will ensure that every child has the foundational skills necessary to successfully engage with text and experience the joy of reading. Reading comprehension, the ultimate goal of reading relies on multiple skills, knowledge and cognitive processes, including spoken language comprehension, accurate and automatic decoding, developed vocabulary and background knowledge. And then when students master the foundational skills and experience reading success, they will continue to grow as readers, setting them up for lifelong literacy success and lifelong success. The next section is going to talk about how the AOE is implementing Reed Vermont, including our priorities. So these priorities were formed after we collected the input from the Advisory Council, educators, the General Assembly, curriculum directors and other constituents. And specifically, Emily Lash is going to go into more detail about each of these. But these include state capacity building to build capacity across the agency, professional learning, providing a range of professional learning opportunities for educators and leaders across all grade levels, job embedded coaching, which is that intensive personalized coaching for elementary schools based on need. I a developing a literacy learning network of educators and leaders engaged in this facilitated learning series, preparing, producing, developing guidance documents and resources around Act one thirty nine implementation and evidence based practices, and then that family and caregiver engagement component. The way we are doing this is through leveraging and braiding resources. This work is cross cutting, so we're bringing together a variety of resources. We've identified and pulled together federal funding, state funding that we can also leverage, and then also bringing in resources from national experts that we have access to through the Department of Education and other partners and also looking into creative partnerships. I am now going to turn this back over to Emily Lash to talk about some of the accomplishments to date and our next steps.
Great. Thank you, Emily. So when we look at accomplishments and next steps, we're going to, we've organized this based on our priority areas. So one of our top priorities and first things we really focused on is really building state capacity, which is really internally focused and externally focused. So internally, we are building off of work that began with Act twenty eight and implementation of Act twenty eight around organizing and aligning agency work internally to really focus on Reed Vermont through an interagency team. So this means that we have participation from across all of the divisions in the agency, Student Support Services, Student Pathways Division, Consolidated Federal Programs and the Education Quality Division. And so we have begun to identify processes and alignment all focused on Reed Vermont. Some of the most exciting things that we have seen and one of the areas that has been really exciting to see is also the technical assistance that the agency provides districts in a collaborative way across their divisions is really being is really be impacting the way that the field is doing business. So for instance, we have LEAs that are focused on participating in the Reed Vermont professional learning and leveraging resources through title funds. We have LEAs that are focused on family engagement that are also leveraging title funds and also utilizing their continuous improvement processes to focus on 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 literacy. So. So this work has all really centered around our shared vision, as Loita, as Loita mentioned, was one of our first key steps in launching Reed Vermont, which we did launch Reed Vermont officially, as you can see in September, through a series, through multiple modes, so through a webinar, a memorandum to superintendents and to educators, as well as launching our website. So during our initial launch on September twenty fifth, we had two hundred and seventy nine registrants and over a hundred and fifty participants live from across the state. And then we also had a specific local capacity building webinar where we really dug in more depth to what professional learning and job embedded coaching would look like for the field. And this provided a great, a great opportunity for the field to also provide input on what they would like to see in the workshop series and in job embedded coaching. And then I finally want to note that we also, in addition to this launch, we also in September, August and September, at the end of the summer, we went through a competitive bid process focused on bringing in additional support and contracting and contractors to support us in building capacity at the local, state and family caregiver level. And so we issued this competitive bid and we engaged the field. So we had two education leaders that participated in the review process and as well as agency staff. And so this process resulted in contracts with the Stern Center and with Literacy Consulting, who will both, who are both providing a support for the capacity building at the local level and then also at the state level. I finally want to note that just last week, the agency team led by agency staff Ellen Karins hosted an educator prep program conference. And so the conference engaged educator preparation programs, nine of them, in a discussion about supporting and strengthening educator preparation programs and how they teach evidence based literacy practices. And so this will inform the agency's recommendation to the Standards Board on strengthening educator preparation programs. So overall, the state capacity building work is multifaceted. And we have some next steps, which are, you can see some on the slide, but broadly, continued collaboration and alignment across the agency is a top priority and ensuring that this collaboration is also evident in the field. And you can see that much of this work will be summarized in various reports that we are to issue to the governor and the education committees in both the House and the Senate early in the new year. Professional learning. So professional learning is one of our top priorities. So we have completed the launch of asynchronous literacy modules, which were specifically spelled out in Act twenty eight. And so we have six asynchronous modules for both grades, for both grade bands kindergarten through third grade and then also four through twelve. And these are really, these are based on evidence based practices, include facilitator guides, and then will also be incorporated into the live workshop series that we noted earlier. And then also this workshop series, I just want to note briefly, the workshop series did launch in November. We've held two of them so far. And we have over two hundred educators that have have registered for the workshop series and are engaging in the Google Classroom. We have, in the first workshop, we had seventy five participants that participated live and sixty in our second. And so we are seeing high demand and high participation overall in the workshop series live. And then also folks that are going in and watching the workshop series afterwards. So that is also, it's great to see and also helps us see the the need and demand for this professional learning. Job embedded coaching is a, is another critical component. And so job embedded coaching is really focused on, well, is really focused on how educators put the knowledge gained through the various professional learning series into practice. And so the job embedded coaching is really focused on supporting educators in the classroom as they're doing this work. And so we are providing intensive personalized support for, we have space right now for about a hundred and forty pre kindergarten through third grade educators and leaders and administrators throughout Vermont elementary schools between January twenty twenty five and February twenty twenty six. The, I will say that the demand and interest has been very high, so over thirty supervised reunions, districts or schools completed an introductory interest inventory or essentially applied for this coaching opportunity. And we've been holding calls with all of the districts who have indicated interest and are working collaboratively with the districts, but then also across the Agency of Education and an understanding the additional support that we are providing through the Agency of Education to each of these districts to determine which ones are in a place to really start coaching this winter. And so this has been a really exciting process and also demonstrates the need for that, that hands on support in classrooms and in school buildings across the, across the state. So the, the coaching will begin in January and we are really looking two ways to sustain this work and leveraging and breeding a variety of resources together to do that and to ensure that we're able to meet this demand in a sustained, a sustained manner. So the fifth priority here is focused on guidance documents and resources. And so this really, I will say, our approach to providing guidance, resources, recommendations, and also outlining the requirements of Act one thirty nine has really been focused on a two step process. So first, providing the, the, the resource or guidance document, but also complementing, secondly, complementing that with hands on support and training for, for the field. And so we issued screening guidance in November, focusing on the requirements for screening, for screening notification for students that are significantly below benchmark per Act one thirty nine. But we also followed that up with hosting a screening and family notification question and answer session. And we had, we had around fifty school and district leaders join that session and to learn together and from one another about the screening and family notification guidance. The, the session also spotlighted one district's screening and notification practice that they had in place prior to this notification being released and offered an opportunity for leaders to to learn from one another, as well as one of our national subject matter experts who was, who was on the line. And so we're, we're also eager to continue that and felt like that worked really well of issuing the guidance and then also providing the opportunity for the field to engage around the guidance. So coming up next, we are working hard to issue our review of screeners based on the specifications that are outlined in Act one thirty nine. That will come by January fifteenth. Our professional learning workshop series in January will also focus on assessments to provide that opportunity for, for learning and engaging with other tools connected to that guidance. The last, the last piece I want to hit on is family and caregiver engagement and engaging with, with families, we know is really critical to this work overall. And so we have developed resources to support educators when engaging with family and caregivers. We had two districts that piloted work from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four in family engagement that we were able to gather a lot of lessons learned from. We also have published resources and for parents and guardians and are looking forward to this winter launching additional resources for educators, really focused on educators and supporting them as they engage with parents and guardians. And again, I'll note that this work is being done with collaboration across the agency with those that are focused on, on family and caregiver engagement, and then also cross agency collaboration with, for instance, the Department of, of Libraries. So with that, that was our, our broad overview of all of the work happening and are happy to take questions here.
Well, Emily and Emily, thank you both very much for bringing the board up to date. This is a lot of really, really good work that you guys are engaged with. So thank you very much. Board members, questions, comments? Tammy?
I'll echo Jennifer's. Thanks to Team Emily. I should have called you Team Emily at this point in the agency for doing this. I'm curious if you could just help me draw a clear line between the work you're doing in the revised EQS and also last year's changes, changes to statute with respect to literacy. You can help me understand sort of how this work is making those connection, those explicit connections. That would be helpful.
Yes, so the statute, the changes in last, in statute last year were a result of Act one thirty nine. And the changes within EQS or within, many of the changes in statute really align with the changes in in EQS and. with the changes in, in, in EQS. And Secretary Saunders, I'm not sure if you have other information to share here.
Yeah, certainly. So Act 139 is supported by Reed Vermont, but we also were intentional about providing a broader set of support for educators that are promoting literacy at all age levels. This is actually something that's coming out of the Literacy Advisory Council as a recommendation. We absolutely need to focus on our early learners, but we, we know that many of our students that are in the older grades and middle school and high school are also struggling readers. And we want to make sure that we're equipping those educators with their resources and tools to best support their needs. So the development of Reed Vermont is very much in line with those recommendations from the Literacy Advisory Council to support what is required within statute for K3, but also offering additional training and support for literacy across the continuum of our, all the way up to our adult learners. So just wanted to clarify that, and we're working really closely with the Literacy Advisory Council in that work. And, you know, this is an example of how the agency is really engaging in implementation, planning, and support. I want to highlight a couple of key factors. Reed Vermont was developed with input from the Literacy Advisory Council and from our curriculum directors around what type of support would be most impactful from the agency. Also developed this in a way that was very data-driven and iterative and comprehensive, right? So we're looking at educators, caregivers, different system leaders of, throughout the state. So just wanted to kind of highlight that that's a practice that we're really engaged in thoughtfully now in literacy and also working towards in math as it relates to the education quality standards. This is work that we're, is also cross-functional and really thinking about how can we best support that and developing those proficiency, proficiency-based learning skills, as we have done with DQS, to roll that out for, for the summer. So there's definitely overlap, something else we're being very intentional about, and we've heard feedback through our Listen and Learn Tour, is the opportunity to be interdisciplinary and cross-curricular. So recognizing that literacy can be embedded in social studies and science. And so we're really being intentional around that body of work as well.
Jen, can I ask a quick follow-up question before we move on to? The reason I ask about the EQS, and this directly ties back to Act One, is that literacy and how we teach literacy is a, an important platform for us to address concerns around equity. There's a fairly substantial and important body of work and research out there that suggests the kinds of books that we introduce children to, whether or not they see themselves in the stories, and that can be sort of in terms of physical representation, but also their own narratives. And what I didn't see in this presentation was any sort of explicit connections in that way. And then related to that is, if we're going to be engaging the field and doing this substantial professional development, which it sounds like we are around Reed Vermont, isn't this a really good opportunity to be bringing some of that, some of that conversation around, how do we build capacity in the field to implement the under, sort of these underpinnings of, of the EQS, which is Act One? So I'm a little curious. I didn't see any of that as sort of explicit in your presentation. Maybe it's out there a bit. If you could talk a little bit about that. I think that's really important for the board to understand, since EQS is one of our roles.
Yeah. So I was, if you look at our shared vision for literacy on the Reed Vermont webpage, it's a lot more explicit about what's included in that. And we do talk about access to different types of texts at different times for different purposes. And one of those, you know, purposes would be for students to, to see themselves in the text and also to see others and sort of invite them into other kinds of, you know, places where they may not normally see themselves. So it's sort of that whole representation piece, and that is in our shared vision. And we also have done some work with our spotlights on equity resources through the content specialists have all put out spotlights on equity, which include lots of resources for how to take that equity lens when delivering instruction and selecting curriculum, designing curriculum. And the one that is published for ELA and literacy has lots of information about the importance of access to texts and culturally relevant, responsive, and sustaining materials for students and what that means. And so that is something I can grab from the webpage, and I can put that in the chat.
Is that part of professional development as well, Emily? Because I mean, that's really, that's really where we need to be building capacity.
Yeah. Yes, absolutely. Emily, were you going to say something? I was just going to say that it absolutely, sorry, Emily, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but the, it absolutely is built into the, the professional learning. And I would say a piece of the culturally, building culturally responsive and inclusive environments for all students. Literacy instruction is really critical and an underpinning to that. And so it, we are being very careful to that in the design of the professional learning overall, but then also in a cross-cutting way. But then also what Emily Loita is speaking to are some of the very specific initiatives that we have to focus on, ensuring that educators are receiving professional learning in this way.
Thank you both.
Jenna, I'm going to call on you as my last business, and then Tammy, passing the baton to you. I'm really so sorry that I need to step off. Got a pre-existing appointment. But thank you all. Happy holidays. And I'll talk to you all soon. Thanks.
Hi. I guess my question is, when you're, I'm on your webpage, I'm looking at your links. You have a lot of links for foundational skills and let's say their comprehension. I think those are good, very strong best practices. But I'm wondering, what does this look like in the field for schools that have multiple different programs underway and initiatives, and they're already used? And whether they're, have strong impact or not, I know sometimes teachers are very attached to how they teach or instruct reading. So I guess what's the intersection? Because I, you're not presenting a program, so to speak. It's practices?
Yeah, it's very intentionally program-agnostic. And we make sure that the professional learning webinars, the asynchronous modules, and then also the coaching that our contractors are going to provide in the districts is going to be responsive to where the educators are, and then moving them toward the ultimate goal of using those evidence-based best practices and instruction. And that's including things like our, our guidance for screening. We will be reviewing, publish a review of screeners and explaining, you know, why, according to the research, these screeners are stronger and would be something that we would recommend using or not using. And if you are using a certain screener, how you can supplement that with other materials and screeners if it doesn't screen for all of the requirements of Act 139, for example. And so we are very intentional about wanting to meet educators where they are in their practice, and then also in their philosophy and in their, just their experience, and helping them build capacity from there.
Sorry, are you, so, sorry, I'm just confused. Can they choose their own screener from the list that you're providing? Or is there one screener that you'd like to see used in all schools that are going to provide benchmark data for the agency?
So I'll, I'll take this one, and then I'll let the Emilys expand on it. So I think there's just a reality in terms of timing that we're contending with. So this is new legislation. We're all really excited about implementing it. But some of the components are not necessarily aligned with the school-based process. So as an example, schools were asked to start their screening in the fall. The agency is required to recommend screening tools in the spring. So we looked at that, and we said, okay, there's a gap here. We need to accelerate our work as much as we can to align it with the actual decision-making and process that's happening in schools. And so we're doing that, but we're recognizing that in this first year of the implementation, some of these decisions are a little bit off. And that's why the job embedded coaching part is so important, because we know that districts are implementing different programs. They may be at different phases of readiness. And we really wanted to be intentional in this first year of being able to come alongside our educators and supporting them with this transition. We are hearing through this process and through our Listen and Learn Tour, that there's opportunities for us to, to stage this in different ways as we think about future legislation and future initiatives. And that gets into the conversation we've had pretty consistently today around implementation and the agency really being thoughtful around the timing of, of what is involved. Because ideally, we would be able to have those screening tools available last, you know, spring or even earlier to align with budgeting cycles, right? And have time for training over, over the summer and into the fall. But we're, we're recognizing that there's a little bit of a misalignment, but we still know that there's important and valuable information and resources we can provide now. We've gotten feedback as we move forward, you know, to be able to do some of the research and embedding for screening tools and curriculum that could be helpful for the districts. And that's something that's coming out of our Listen and Learn Tour, of that being a desire for the field, for the agency to take that on in a, in a more robust way. And Reed Vermont is a way for us to begin modeling that and learning how to do that really effectively and in a different way. But I'll allow Emily Lesch or Emily Loita to expand. We kind of joke that if you're going to lead a literacy initiative at the Agency of Education, your first name needs to be Emily, and your last name needs to start with L. So we will turn it over to the Emilys to expand.
I'll just, more specifically about the screeners is, we, we, Act 139 is requiring districts to screen students using a screener that meets certain, you know, measures certain things. And so we're going to be publishing guidance around how to do that, and then giving a list of screeners that we have reviewed to let districts know whether or not it does these things. And if it does some of them, but not all of them, how they can supplement what that screener, if they're using a screener that does some of the things, but not all of the things, how they can supplement it. And then also some additional considerations about just best practices with screeners in general. So if you're using a screener that does some of the things, the best, and some of, and then you supplement with one that does some of the other things, you should also consider these things about screeners. So it's sort of a multifaceted approach with, with lots of on-ramps for the educators in the districts to find something that puts them in compliance with the law, and then also allows them to work in ways that are, you know, adhering to best practices.
So would you make recommendations that they drop their current, they're moving forward, what they're using for benchmarks now? So students aren't being screened over and over and over again, using local, and then the agency-recommended data screener?
So the screeners that are, that have been reviewed are ones that, that are, we, we did survey the field to see which screeners were in use a lot. And so we did do a review of those screeners to provide that information. And Emily, did you want to add anything?
I think the one thing I'll add, Jenna, potentially part of what you might be getting at here is over-assessing kids. And so a part of our guidance is really focused on ensuring that we're using the right assessment for the right purpose at the right time to drive instruction and, and screeners in particular, that the purpose is to really help understand where students are and to help drive instruction in the classroom. And so that then, that can also help ensure progress monitoring, to ensure that students are, are making the progress that's intended.
Thank you both to the Emily Ls, to Zoe. Apparently Emily, it's not just the Emilys, it's the Emily Ls. Thank you for your really helpful presentation. Any other additional comments or questions from the board? What I would suggest is, you know, if board members have additional comments or questions or feedback they'd like to share with the agency on this important work, I'm happy to sort of take those in and collate them and send them back to Zoe, who I think can get them to the Emily L team. But very much appreciate all the work that the Emilys and the agency are doing in this area. And we really appreciate you taking the time and waiting while we, a little delayed our agenda today. So thank you so much for that time. I think we'd like to now shift to Agenda Item N, which is the State, the State of Special Education, as I know this is an important topic for the board, and the board's had a lot of interest in that. I'm noting that we have 30 minutes on our agenda set aside for this. Meg, are you presenting for the agency?
I am.
Do you have a sense of how long your presentation is? And I can try to be a timekeeper that way and, and keep it, I know we're a little over already in terms of our time. So I'm going to try to keep this within the 30 minutes.
Yeah. So if I could have 30 minutes, that would be perfect. I can also
For a presentation?
For a presentation. So I am, yeah, that's just the presentation. So if you would prefer that I give you a, a two-minute just update on where we are, I did put, there are two, there are two documents that were linked with the, with the agenda. One is my presentation, and the other one is sort of a public version of our annual state performance plan, annual performance report. And my presentation is basically me talking through some of those things.
Let me see, Meg, if I could just check in with the board real quick. I see, I think I saw a chat coming from Lyle that you've got a hard stop at 10, 12:50. Can I just check in with the board how folks are doing on time, noting that Lyle is 12:50? Because I'm thinking if we have a 30-minute presentation, we're going to want to talk to you a little bit about that, because it's going to be interesting, and you're going to bring up all kinds of things we want to know more about. So I'm a little curious on how we are for time. I don't want to shortchange this. That's my, that's my concern, Meg and Zoe. Mohamed?
Yeah, I feel like the same as Lyle. And I apologize, I haven't seen my face much today because I have a terrible cyst in my face.
Oh, I'm sorry. Our thoughts are with you, Mohamed.
I'm in massive pain. At 12:50, I should be off. I apologize.
Okay. Let me, let me check in real quick here then. I know that the board has asked for this presentation. I know that it's, and it's important. I'm particularly interested. But I also don't want to shortchange that time. So, Zoe, is, are there, are there five minutes of updates that are particularly time-sensitive for us right now? Or would it be more, make more sense for us to push this off until January, where we can really dig in and have a fulsome conversation on that? I'd like to hear from the agency what their preferences are too, before we make a decision.
I think it's really important that we devote the time. This is an important topic. And the, the presentation walks through a lot of the complexity of special education delivery that requires some background, and I think more discussion. So I would appreciate that the presentation be allowed that full amount. So
Yeah.
for the next month. It sounds like though Meg has a couple of key things that she would just like to update.
Sure.
If you would give.
So how about we do, let me check in with the board. How about we have Meg give us or for sort of a five-minute High Level Readers Digest version of the things that are particularly time-sensitive? That will give us five or six minutes if we have questions. And we'll table the full presentation and a lot more than 30 minutes to this. And the presentation itself will be 30 minutes. There's no time for discussion, and we can do that on the next agenda. Is that, how to, is everybody on the board feel good about that? Kim?
Can I just ask a question, Tammy? With respect to the IDAB, I D E A B, State Determination, is that under the same umbrella of this, I'm assuming, under the same umbrella of this agenda item? And wondering if that is separate and distinct, if that is what we should do, is just give the Reader's Digest version of that to this board for a degree of understanding, and then devote the, the time necessary at the next meeting to the State of the State? Or are they intricately involved, and basically the Reader's Digest of any of it is going to touch on both? Do we have a role in either?
Yeah. I think, Meg, I, I think, Kim, if it's okay, maybe we can defer to Meg to decide what it is that she thinks right now that is timely, that we need to have board input on, right? So that if there's sort of policy direction that you're wanting from the board or something along those lines. But yes, IDA is, is certainly part of, is part of all this. So, Kim, would that be all right? Does that work for you? Okay, Meg. So Meg, how about, it's 12:42. I'm going to, how about five minutes? And I can give you a heads-up at four minutes, okay?
Sure. So thank you very much. They are, they are integrated. And so it would, my Reader's Digest version was actually going to be updates on where special education is right now with the, where we are, and have very little to do with the reporting, just in, because there's just not the time. So what? So what the updates are that I think everybody maybe remembers that Heather Bilisdoxy, who had been our State Director of Special Education, left at the end of September. And we started the process of finding the next State Director immediately at the beginning of October. And that process has been just chugging along beautifully. And we are nearly at the end, which is the happy news that I wanted to give. And so by the time 2025 rolls around, we will be ready to announce who our next State Director of Special Education is. And possibly that person will be the one delivering the state of the state. And then you can have the subject matter expert in front of you and which would also be good. While that was going on, however, while we were doing the search for the next State Director, the leadership of the current, of the special education team that includes Chris Kane, who is the Assistant Director, Anna Russo, who is the Program Manager and the one who is the, she manages our State Performance Plan Annual Performance Report. I'm just going to call it the SPPAPR from now on. Along with Cassie Santo, who stepped up to become our interim State Director, the three of them, along with the rest of the team and our colleagues at the Data Management and Analysis Division, really worked hard, not only just to keep the lights on, so to speak, but to keep work moving forward. And I think we're in pretty not-so-bad shape for having had some destabilizing events abound leadership on that team. And then the final thing that I wanted to say is, I think Zoe mentioned some reporting that was coming out from, I want to call it New Horizons, is that accurate? I just want to say Nate Levinson's group.
New Solutions.
New Solutions, sorry. And there will be one on special education that we can also expect to come out in January.
And that report will be written in, again, that plain language, similar to the Education Funding Report. It will highlight some of the key takeaways from the presentation that Meg will share next month along with an analysis of the financing for special ed and best practices.
Great job staying right in time. All right. Questions or comments for our colleagues at the agency? Kim?
This is going to be the lesser informed question. I am, I think, just fundamentally backing out, is the state of Vermont still in the penalty box on special education as an SEA?
So it's, that's kind of a yes and. There are designations of penalty box. And where we land, there are as a state, things that we have to improve upon that are complicated to explain because one of them, for example, has to do with how the state's governance is, is designed. Like one of them has to do with the fact that our high schools in Grand Isle, for instance, is like that governance structure is, is what is leading to one of the things that has caused us to have the designation that we do. So it's complicated. But we've also been moving out of the real bad penalty box into the lesser. So we've been moving in the right direction, but that is exactly why I need 30 minutes or more because it's not a super clear, simple answer. And I don't want anyone to take a snippet of what I say and have it be misconstrued in a way that would be unfortunate.
We appreciate the care of you taking that. Follow up, just one, yeah, I know I'm grateful. I know it's complicated. And that's why I'm like this, I am pretty uninformed in this very technical area of education. The penalty box, if you will, whatever that nuance is at the SEA level, is that impacting our federal funding for the, like as it flows through to LEAs?
In absolutely no way, shape or form.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And I'm guessing there's probably themes or categories of the areas that we are viewed to be in some version of penalty box and that that would be covered in a presentation that we could sort of dig into and add to a January meeting that might be a little bit longer.
Absolutely. And you also have that information now. In fact, if you, if you read the N, that's the, the public report, it, it will say exactly what you are looking for. But I'm, we'll be very happy to dig into that next month or the next time we can be on the agenda.
And you'll make a sense of the specific corrective actions that the team has brought up. We've been working with our special education directors in the field around that to promote broad understanding and coordination on those items.
Yeah, I would encourage the board to read the report part two when Meg makes her presentation. It might actually help with sort of keeping our conversation nice and focused. It is a technical area and I know even after having worked around IDA for many years, you know, I just put a cheat sheet on acronyms in the, right? So perhaps taking a few minutes to read that now that we have it in advance will help our conversation. One plug I will put in and I'll sort of foreshow. I'm curious, when you do make your presentation, if you can talk about the role the BOCs might play going forward in addressing some of those governance structures? Because I do think there was some legislative intent there around further consolidation. And my expectation is that may be part of our response. But I do think that the board understanding that and also the legislature understanding how that might be useful would be really powerful, right? Particularly going into the legislative session. So.
Yeah, agreed. For sure.
Other comments or questions for Meg and Zoe? Thank you both. We will prioritize time on the agenda for you to make sure we have adequate time for your presentation and adequate time for discussion.
Thank you.
And again, appreciate Zoe and your entire team today. We've really had you on deck quite a bit. And thank you for your engagement. Okay, so I'm noticing we are starting to lose some members. We have already covered Agenda Item P. So I think we will move on to Agenda Q, which is public to be heard if there are no other comments or feedback from the board at this time. Okay. So again, we will start to take public comment, public to be heard at this point. I believe if you are on the line, you can hit star five. Maureen or Suzanne could correct me on my team's protocol, which I mess up because it's entirely different at the company I work for. Is there any public, if you'd like to raise your hand?
You've got it right, Tammy. And I don't see anybody waiting.
Okay, all right. Well, with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Thank you, Rich. Do I have a second? Thank you. Call in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for a productive meeting today and I wish everyone a very happy new year.
You too.
Same to you.
Cheers, everybody.